Hey, everyone. Walter Wood of the Montgomery County Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, September 11, 2024. I left the record show that we have a forum with five members in the room and Bob Blue online. John Ernst is excused. Have we heard from him a little bit? And I wanted to announce to board members that Dan Nemroth has attended a resignation from the planning commission due to professional and personal conflicts. So we have a seat open and we'll work through with the county commissioner and see the next few months. So with that, do we have any word comments from anybody from board members? Bob, give me a comment before we get started.
Do I have a motion to approve the Montgomery County Planning Commission regular monthly meeting minutes from Wednesday, July 10, 2024? Can you move that second? Are there any comments or corrections in the meeting minutes? Say none. Are there any negative votes in approving the meetings? Next up on our list is, next up on our agenda is public comments. Is there any public comment or staff comment on anybody in the room? In the boardroom? Anybody online? Can we get back to the gallery again? Saying none, we'll move on to our first formal agenda item, which is community planning assistance contract fee determination. And I'll call on Eric. Good morning, Eric.
Thank you very much. Right, so everybody has the presentation summary in their packet. But this is a little unusual year, so I typically don't do a PowerPoint presentation for this, but I just wanted to get us all on the same page and kind of understand the framework that we're working with. Hi, just a quick reminder about the Community Planning Assistance Program. We currently have thirty-eight contracts, thirty-four municipal contracts, and four regional contracts. You can see the planning map there. We have eleven community planners that manage these contracts. The program goal is to recover fifty percent of our costs. Again, since the program was established almost sixty years ago, the idea was that we provide good planning services to those communities in the county that need it, but it will be subsidized by fifty percent by the county commissioners. So as long as we recover fifty percent of our costs back, we're meeting that kind of mandate. We wanted to analyze the costs every year as we go into these fee adjustment discussions to see where we are in that recovery process. And so we try to get as close to that fifty percent as possible. Previous twenty twenty-three approved planer day rate increase last September, we did a five percent increase last year. Previous years, for probably a stretch of maybe eight or nine years, we just did a one percent increase. But that was maintaining that fifty percent cost recovery and seemed to be meeting our needs. So to review, again, back to twenty twenty-two, our cost recovery was fifty-two percent. We went into twenty twenty-three with slightly higher salary costs. We had a mid-year adjustment due to inflation and end-of-year typical salary adjustments. Our costs were going higher into twenty twenty-three. This time last year, we did the estimate of the, based on January to June, what our recovery would be for twenty twenty-three. We estimated about fifty-one percent at that time. But we anticipated that the cost recovery by the end of the year might be a little bit lower. We weren't fully staffed in twenty twenty-three until July. So we thought that we could be closer to that fifty percent. By the end, so we approved that five percent, knowing that we might come closer, drop below that fifty percent recovery. And we maintained the increases of one percent between the three years of the planning assistance contracts. When we did the end of the year, early in twenty twenty-four, our cost recovery was forty-nine percent. So as anticipated, we did drop slowly below that fifty percent. Remember, the five percent doesn't come into effect until twenty twenty-four, but I think it helped justify why we did increase the rates last September. However, things changed. Shortly after we did our salary, our cost fee adjustment of five percent last September, the county implemented the countywide compensation study that had been going on for a number of years in October, October seventeenth, mid-October is when it took effect. And the average salary increase for community planners was about seventeen and a half percent. Well-needed. We weren't as competitive as we'd like to be with our peers in trying to get good planners. And so that adjustment was a lot, made a lot of sense, and so that we could be more competitive in sort of the employment sector. But it did significantly increase our costs going into twenty twenty-four. Our hourly rate basically went up ten dollars, about fifty-eight dollars an hour to sixty-eight dollars per hour in the services we provide to the community planners. And that's basically both sides of the equation, what the county covers and what the municipalities cover. Estimating our mid-year costs this year, again, January to June, our cost recovery is down to forty-two percent. Again, not completely surprising, given the almost eighteen percent increase in salaries. Obviously, the revenue was already set for twenty twenty-four coming in, based on the current contracts that we have. You can just see in the chart. So we had that salary adjustment of seventeen point four in twenty twenty-three, which significantly increased our average hourly rate, and again, brought us down to a forty-two percent recovery. So we'd need about a nineteen percent revenue increase overnight to get back to that fifty percent. That can't happen. We can't increase it enough, and it can't be achieved in one year. Remember, this year only eleven of the thirty-eight contracts are renewing, so whatever we do today is only going to affect those eleven next year. The other are locked in for the next year or two. So it'll be at least three years before what we're doing today affects all of our contracts. So again, we have a multi-year plan for how to get back to that fifty percent. We worked with a group of the Planning Commission Board, Stephen, Nicole, and Bob, to discuss this and go over a number of options. I had probably about fifteen options of what that multi-year strategy would look like in terms of different percentages. And so we decided on a plan to move forward with. We will look at this every year. And so whatever we've proposed for year two, three, and four, that can change. We're going to look at this just as closely next year and see if that adjustment we need to do next year is on target, needs to be more aggressive, less aggressive. You know, we'll look at every, we wanted to develop, being planners, a plan for how to get back to that fifty percent, knowing that it didn't make sense to do in one year. So we recommended a twelve percent increase this year for the year one planner day rate. We're also adjusting the increases between the years. So the year one rate goes up twelve percent. And then typically, year one to year two was a one percent increase, year two to year three was a one percent increase. We're increasing that to three percent, just as another way to capture some additional revenue. But also, as we do those multi-year increases moving forward, it'll sort of lessen the impact on the communities renewing this year for what jump they might have at the end of their next contract. So those were the two reasons that we sort of adjusted that internal rate. So you can see.
It wasn't me.
That's all right. I just, I don't know how to fix it for you.
I can fix it, that is.
Oh, did it seem like thirty options, more so?
Yeah, I think he's underestimating. My mind was swirling, though, as I saw.
I had reduced it down to the three I showed you, but I did the heavy work behind the scenes.
I'm gonna stop sharing. I'm gonna open it back up again. This has been, this has been a weird day.
Yeah, it's a weird day. Mercury and retrograde today? What's going on?
Maybe stop sharing and blow it up, then share.
Yeah, let's try that.
We'll do the, do the, sorry, do the button on the right first. All right, let's make this big. The one on the left, pull that tight so we get this as big as possible.
The bar between.
Doesn't even give you that option.
Let me get out of the PowerPoint and put it back up. Sorry, Eric.
It's fine. No, nothing. Not your fault.
We're going pretty good there, Eric.
Yeah, I was on a roll.
Has anyone heard enough to say it?
Well, really, the other thing left, I mean, you have the numbers in your, in the resolution that I was just going to show. The only, the next slide was just to give you a sense of the impact on the contract renewals that it's going to have and the communities renewing this year, what their increased costs might be.
Why are you getting that before we get that comes back up? Let's get to the recognition. So before, we have MTPC Resolution twenty-four dash nine point one, Resolution of Montgomery County Planning Commission, adjusting the fee schedule for the Community Planning Assistance Program with the first year, for your contract for planner days, seven fifty, second year, seven fifty-eight, and third year, seven fifty-six. All other fees are listed on the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So those, those are the current. Yeah, the back and age is the proposed. That's okay.
The resolution before us with the all the information as listed on the, on the resolution. So I have a motion to approve the resolution. Can you move that second? Can we move to second? If you want to raise some PowerPoint, comes up, it's going to be important, or do we want to have?
No, so just the, the communities that are ending this year, they're paying about thirteen thousand a year. Under the new rates, if they renew in twenty twenty-five, they'd be paying about fifteen thousand. So it'll be about a two thousand dollar increase. About a hundred and sixty dollars a month, they'll be paying more. But that's still our professional services. When you break down that, that almost seventy dollars between the county and the municipalities, they're still only going to be paying only thirty-five dollars an hour for professional services. And when you compare that to their engineers, solicitors, and planning services that, you know, that they could get, if they don't use us, we're still a tremendous bargain. And I did already have several conversations with a few managers, and the one just said, give me the number. You guys are just a very good bargain, and it's not going to, not going to really matter, I'm sure. You know, there's some limit to that, but anyway.
Ready? So any comments or questions from board members in the room?
Yeah, I have a question. So Eric, how, how, how are these contracts, the scope of work and the theme decided? Is it standard amongst the municipalities, or is it different for each municipality?
It varies by municipality. We have a standard contract, which is two and a half planner days a month, plus twelve night meetings, because we typically attend the planning commission meeting each month. From there, we kind of go either way, depending on the work that they want done. For a larger community that might come in with more complex issues, for comprehensive plan for a horseham, I think we did three and a half planner days. We do a comprehensive plan for Brockledge, you know, it'll probably stay at two and a half, just because of the, again, additional complexities, the size of the community, and depending on the work. Some communities want more aggressive work programs, so they want program that's going to get work done faster, or maybe multiple projects at a time. They'll go up to maybe four, five planner days, because that's almost going to take a planner and a half, two planners to do it. So it just varies by community, based on what they ask us to do, the complexity of the community, and how fast they want it done.
Does the scope ever increase during the year, like municipality says?
Well, my friends, rarely do you see a debate as consequential as what we saw tonight between Donald Trump and House of Representatives. With conventional wisdom, it's a debate that will never happen.
I'm sorry, I was trying to connect, to get the documents. Does the scope ever increase, like, this way through the three-year contract, they say, oh, we now have this issue we'd like you to attend to, and therefore the budget goes up? Does that happen?
Occasionally, a lot of times, because we'll have flexible assistance built in, and so there'll be some flexibility for us to go up or down in the work level for that community. So we definitely want to be nimble and flexible, that if something comes up, a development comes in, and they want us to rewrite, rewrite its zoning district, we're going to do that. I dipped, I don't like renegotiating the contract midstream, because over the course of the three years, it usually ebbs and flows to the point that it works out evenly by the end of the three. If they've substantially been increasing their level of work over the three-year contract, I'll grab that back in the negotiation of the next contract and up their limit to both reflect what they've been doing and maybe claw some of that back.
Do I remember correctly that there is, in the materials you gave as per prep, the, we did do some comparison with other counties, did we not?
No, that was part of the compensation study. They did compare what we were being paid with the other counties, and that's kind of why we needed the bump to be brought up to speed with them.
So I think it's really important to see all of this context, if you keep this slide up here, explaining to communities exactly, you know, when they hear the number without any context, it may be daunting to them. But when they, it's broken down and it's more specific to really what their costs are going to be, and the recognition that we're working in an environment where there have been a lot of increasing costs, and that's reflected in what we have. We should be paying the people who are helping them, and I think all of that makes a difference. And it'll be interesting to see who you get pushback from and exactly what the conversation is. And this is what we need to do to function physically responsibly and as employers, so this is what we do.
So two things to that real quick are, partly with having the increased compensation, hopefully that's also going to help our retention. And so they're going to have longer relationships with their planner, and they're going to get planners who reach the senior and principal level working for them, as opposed to. That, that'll be the part of the discussion, yeah. I mean, most of them, it's, again, a lot of these communities have been re-upping every three years for decades. So we don't always have a big presentation for each renewal. They just say, send me the numbers, I'll put in the budget.
Communities of the eleven that are coming up this year, that, yeah, concerns about?
I don't. No, I mean, there's maybe one or two, they're just smaller communities that, you know, depending on their overall budgets, asking for another two grand, you know, they have to find, get rid of two grand somewhere else, and that can be a challenge for some. I do have a little bit of flexibility on the level of service side, that we can reduce that and pull back some of the services, maybe reduce the meetings, look at what they've been doing in the past few years, and if we've budgeted for twelve, but they've canceled a couple of year, we could drop that to ten or nine, and that'll save. So we have some flexibility in the individual negotiations as well.
What's the current, what's the current capacity of the community planners that we have staffed? Maxed out, or do they?
We have, we have a little bit, now that we're fully staffed, we have a little bit of additional flexibility. We did just add Hatfield Borough. I've had a couple reach out to me recently for some cost proposals, so.
Anybody new?
One was new, yeah.
How about a question, right? Like, if we lose, do you have a sense of how many, how many communities? If we lose a certain number of communities, we would be overstaffed in the community plan, so the community planners.
It would be at least three or four. We'd have to, we'd have to get down closer to thirty until we'd be overstaffed for the community planning program, obviously. Yeah, we could use them in other areas.
And as, as we move into, or continuing the development of the comprehensive plan, this is a really important time for us to have those connections with communities. You know, listening to them and also feeding back what concerns are. So I think this is, this is the time we should, you know, hopefully, this will be, you know, our communities will accept this and we can move on. And our hope always is that we increase in numbers, you know, we increase in numbers, and then we, we increase our level of employees, number of employees, and serve more communities, because it's such a really beneficial.
Yeah, again, I've heard from, from a number that, you know, that they recognize the value. And again, I think it's just going to be the smaller budget communities that, you know, need more of a discussion.
Are there any other comments or questions from board members?
I would say, I think it's great that there's four regional plans or services provided, because municipalities sometimes are very municipal in the way they look at the world. And when you have a more regional concept, that, in my view, would tend to get better planning.
And again, we have twenty-four communities in regional planning, and I'll just one, one little commercial on that.
It's digitalized now.
It is. We're working on our third version of the comprehensive plans for all four. And I think when we see the numbers that we saw last month in the, in the units built and in the non-residential construction, and we're pushing ninety-seven percent of development occurring in our growth areas and our existing developed areas, a lot of that, which would be happening in the north and western part of the county, reflects the success of regional plan. Sorry.
Any other questions? Any questions from staff or any comments or questions from staff or public? Anybody online? Paul is the favorite to approve the Community Planning Assistance Contract Fee Resolution. I?
I agree.
Any opposed? Great. Thanks, Eric.
Thanks a lot.
And thank you, Eric, for your years of service on this. I mean, you do a good job of it.
All right, next agenda item is, it's Austin Long.
Yeah.
And where are all of our technical problems? Are we controlling it from here and we're, there we go?
Morning, everyone.
I'm supposed to be the one to.
No, you have to, you are, you are, you are not on here, Anne.
I know, and I'm always behind the scene.
Not until, not until the end item agreed, you're not on here. What would the meaning be without Anne? I didn't expect to have this conversation until later on.
And the sticker's on you. All right.
Out of reach.
Our next agenda item is annual, annual inventory presentation, and we'll call on Austin Mosby and Anne to assist.
Morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Okay.
Morning, Austin.
Good morning. I will be presenting the inventories for twenty twenty-three. And you can go to the next slide.
Fine.
Okay, what's in our inventories? Our inventories keep track of the multifamily and attached housing, age-restricted housing, shopping centers, and the business parks in Montgomery County. We track major residential and non-residential construction in our quarterly inventories, and the source of the information is the county's Board of Assessment and Appeals database. These inventories help us analyze growth and trends in the county. Monco has one hundred and thirteen thousand units across five hundred and ninety multifamily and four hundred and forty attached developments. This is an increase from sixteen hundred and seventy-eight units from twenty twenty-two. Thirty-two new developments started and/or were completed in twenty twenty-three. That is twenty-five attached units and seven multifamily units. In terms of the market characteristics and trends, we saw, we see continued growth in denser housing configurations county-wide, with a greater emphasis placed on redevelopment and infill development. The proximity to existing commercial and employment centers, it was evident that you're seeing a more focused growth near mixed-use development and more walkability. Next slide.
I'm really in trying. No, don't, don't touch, don't touch.
This is a map of our multifamily and detached, multifamily and attached units across the county, different developments. Okay, moving on to age-restricted housing. There are over twenty-five, two, sorry, twenty thousand five hundred units county-wide across a hundred and twenty-nine developments. About half of these are multifamily. No, that is not correct. About half are single-family. Fifty-four of the units were multifamily. A hundred and twenty-two of them were detached, single-family, and a hundred and thirty-eight were townhomes. So the overwhelming majority were single-family, with about half of that single-family number being attached, and about half of it being detached.
Great, but is it saying about half of the twenty thousand five hundred is multifamily?
Oh, yes, yes, that's correct. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, existing at present, that's what that figure is. At present, of the twenty thousand five hundred units, about half of those are multifamily. And then in twenty twenty-three, there were six newer ongoing developments, a total of three hundred and fourteen. And with that twenty twenty-three development, the dark blue in the pie chart is the multifamily. So the overwhelming development for twenty twenty-three was single-family. And of the single-family, it was about half detached and half attached. The fifty-four units of multifamily in twenty twenty-three were from Annabelle Gardens in Upper Moreland Township. That added the fifty-four age-restricted and also income-restricted units in that development. Thank you for that. And this is a map of the age-restricted housing developments across the county.
Austin, are we, are we privy to any information that would let us know if there were any age-restricted developments that lost or had their age restriction designation removed and made into market rate?
I'm here pinching for Austin personally. I'm not aware of any developments with that.
On to shopping centers. Okay, in the county at present, we have over thirty million square feet of stores and a hundred and fifty-one shopping centers. In twenty twenty-three, we saw five development additions, total of seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-eight square feet. I want to highlight one new anchor store at Willow Grove Park in Abington Township. It's called Tilted Ten. Tilted Ten is a family fun center with bowling and arcade. I'll touch on that again when we get to business parks.
Is that open?
It is.
The reason, the reason I picked that out is because it shows a trend of retail and office space being used to bring experiences instead of the traditional shopping you find in shopping centers. With the developments in twenty twenty-three, mostly were small additions. For example, the Shake Shack at Airport Square in Montgomery Township and Redstone Grill at Promenade at Upper Dublin. And with the market characteristics and trends, we're seeing, again, more mixed-use, more walkable designs, redesign within the existing shopping centers and vacancies across the shopping centers in the county.
Hey, Austin, do you know that Tilted Ten took over for the, for the the movie theater that was, that was supposed to have, like, a dinner theater that was supposed to be, dinner movie theater that was supposed to be at the mall?
I'm not sure, Anne, do you know?
No, no, you're gonna have to go and check it out. We're back next month.
Is it appropriate for my twenty-three-year-old friends? Or do I have to?
It's younger.
Get younger.
It's younger. My fourteen-year-old likes it.
I'm not sure there's enough talent off of that. Got it, Austin.
These are, this is a map of our shopping centers.
Okay, we need to go to different parks.
Business parks. Last but not least is our business park inventory. In Montgomery County, we have over forty-seven million square feet across fifty-two business parks. In twenty twenty-three, there were no new business parks built, and there were only two additional structures added to the existing business parks. One new structure was built at Green Lane Business Center, that's in Marlboro Township, and one new structure was built at Moore Park in Upper Marion Township. Those new structures in Green Lane Business Centered, that is now occupied by Robinson Roofing, and at King of Prussia, I'm sorry, at Moore Park, Moore Park saw Top Golf, King of Prussia move in. Top Golf is another entertainment complex. It is a sports entertainment complex, offering a unique golfing experience for the whole family. The hitting bays have cooling fans in the summer and are heated in winter for year-round fun. And you'll find big screen TVs in every bay and throughout the bar and restaurant. So it sounds like a lot of fun added to King of Prussia area. And the market characteristics and trends, we're seeing rehabilitation, rebranding, and infill to existing developments, just like in shopping centers. And you can go to the next slide. This is Moore Park, King of Prussia, located at the intersection of four twenty-two and the Turnpike. It's just west of King of Prussia Shopping Center. And this is the map of the business parks that are in the county. No new business parks were added in twenty twenty-three. So this is our summary for the residential, the shopping centers, and the business parks. There were seven multifamily and twenty-five attached developments in residential totaling thirteen hundred and eighty-six units. Thirteen, I'm sorry, three hundred and fourteen age-restricted units were added in twenty twenty-three, mostly single-family. Shopping centers, we had five new developments, all in existing centers, adding seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-eight square feet. Shopping centers, we had five new developments, all in existing centers, adding seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-eight square feet. And for business parks, as I had mentioned, we had only two additional structures in two separate, um, pre-existing business parks. Have some more notes here. For two thousand and twenty-four, the inventories and maps will be updated as new developments are completed.
Okay.
Yep.
Any questions for Austin on the inventories?
Just a quick question as a reminder to myself, when do, um, the developments get added to the inventory? Is it once occupancy permits are in place? You know, what, what's the time at which it becomes part of the inventory? So that, you know, any, anything that's currently under construction, but wasn't completed would be to part of two thousand and twenty-four. But what's that trigger again?
And did you say that it was the quarterly reports?
Um, well, we add construction based on when the Board of Assessment and Appeals adds it to their database of being built. So we'll do a, a, a run on the backend of their active database. Sometime early next year, after everything that has completed itself in two thousand and twenty-four is added. That information becomes the reports you see earlier in the year, the housing units built and the non-residential construction reports. But this is a more detailed look at that data to, to look at more individualized trends.
And as Austin alluded to, we also do the quarterly construction report, which is a more timely assertion of what's under construction and what stage they're at.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, I, I have a question. Maybe I missed it in the materials that were sent. Because we used to get the printed sheets for each of these. I guess we're trying not to circulate those to board members. I find I keep them year-over-year and I can go back to them. Is there a reason why we did not get?
They were emailed.
They were emailed to us.
But I'm happy to.
Oh, were they emailed in the separating?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's why I missed them when I was going over last night. Okay, thank you. That's fine.
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, thank you, Austin, for the report. This is Obed, Obederango. My question is about in the residential. Do you have any numbers of how many units are affordable housing, belong to the category of affordable housing? And, and the new developments, consider that.
That is a good question. We didn't see, I don't think our inventories identify affordable housing units. Correct me if I'm wrong, and do we have a separate, um, inventory or data on that?
They are indicated in the, uh, the multifamily and attached inventory, the residential one, uh, indicated if there is, if it's subsidized or, uh,
Or market rate?
Right.
Oh, and yes, that's in the Excel spreadsheet.
Correct.
Oh, okay, yes.
Don't go on our online data portal, but beyond that, we don't really have a way of identifying what, what is compared to. We don't see that much being voluntarily constructed. That, that would be marketed as being in affordable.
Uh, uh, and is there anything that we can do and propose uh, as a policy? Because we know that that is a need. We know that that is a need here in the county.
Oh, yeah. And, and it is a, my policy, um, uh, is more advocacy because we can't mandate. We have, there's different fronts of this. There's the, the Housing and Community Development Office, which is, they have, they are in charge of getting home fund or, or HUD funding and ARPA money. And so there's programs within there that are working towards getting units in and, and and they, 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 they have a better handle on that and list of all those, uh, developments and how that parking. Uh, on our side with the planning, you know, we're always advocating with the conference plan and the zoning updates of where we can make changes, where that, as individual progress come in, we are being consistent in our two forty-seven letters now of advocating for, uh, set aside or, or implemented or incorporation. inclusion of affordable units. That's again, very difficult to have success in, but, but yeah, we're definitely putting the effort.
Yeah, then, then you suggest constantly then to advocate, to do what we can.
I think that's a thrust, that's, that's a focus part of the comprehensive plan. Something that's been discussed, um. You know, as you know, as well as anybody, it's, it's difficult. I mean, you know, with, with the, uh, difficulty in buying mode these days, those people or a lot of people are renting. And such a, there's such a large and consistent market for rental units and developers, you know, have no incentive to do affordable housing. Um, so somehow you have to create a regulation or a uh, a trade-off for those developers incorporating affordable housing. And cost of building those units are still the same. So you have to somehow, it's not a matter of just putting words on the paper. It's actually putting some kind of, um, financial or density, um, incentives to it. So it's just, but there's always that, there's always a fine line as to how you juggle those, those, those opposing things to, to create more affordable housing.
Okay, it's a real focus for the comprehensive plan. The commissioners have stressed it. Your, in fact, it's the first, um, one of the first components we're going to address this fall. Um, I think it's also very important with the, the facts that Stephen just laid out. The county really has, does not have a lot of power in making this happen. We can um, develop policies, we can be advocates, we can consider what kinds of incentives, whether they be financial, educational, to do these things. And then if you go through your packet and read, there were sixty-two pages of, um, of articles to read this time. And that's, I missed the other things. But a lot of them are addressing the resistance and the challenges of getting any type of, um, affordable housing specified for people who are underserved and are needy. And the questions of the percentage or the numbers, not the percent, the numbers of people in Montgomery County who are challenged, it'd be really interesting. One of the things that I'm going to suggest for even for our twenty fifty committee is some of these reports that we have. I'm not saying that everybody has to read them. I'm not going to give everybody a checklist and say you can't come and let you read them. But I think that we need to have them available in some format for the committee if they want to read the backgrounds. I read the, um, the, uh, transition committee's housing, um, study that was put out. And I was really surprised. You know, you, you have people say these things, but unless you see them in concrete, unless you see them in those numbers and they're not disappearing on your screen, which we're all, I, I'm challenged. I can say that I am, I'm challenged. Once it comes past my eyes and it's on the screen, where's it gonna stay in my head with all the other data? So we'll see what we can come up with. We want to be bold, that we want to be reasonable. So it's how you balance that with the challenges that Stephen was talking about, pricing, the market. You know, we can't expect developers to act differently than what their bottom line. They, I, I was told many years ago that developers are like water, they flow downstream. And unless we can help incentivize making different decisions to them in some way, we're not going to get a different outcome. So this is really a whole community challenge. It's bringing lots of people together, having the will, doing a tremendous amount of education. That the people who need housing are, are stereotyped as something, but as a type of person. But a lot of times there are kids. There are grandparents. There are parents need to move around. I think rental prices went up twenty-five percent since the, the, um, epidemic. Since COVID started, that's a huge difference. No wonder people are getting pushed out. People get pushed out of their housing, then they have a black mark on their credit. And then we're trying to find them housing through the county. It's over six hundred families don't have housing. Not for today's conversation intensely, but it's, we're going to try to address it.
And, and, and I appreciate the, the commentaries as, as I understand very well the complexity of the issue. What I have been encouraging now for a few years, it has been to see and check other models that has been working on that in which different levels of government, eh, money from the state, eh, taxes, taxes, incentive to developers, a combination of those things, uh, could happen. And, uh, and that is what I always advocate and encourage.
And some successful examples, which is also what used to be.
Exactly. Therefore, uh, yeah, then, then it's just to put there the, the thought and the, and the wheels and the people on the table to that. I am participating in many of those conversations among social leaders in the county. And I consider that that should be a priority. Eh, the community that I serve is a community that seventy percent of them rent. And, uh, and they are looking for opportunities to do own in the community.
Well, homeownership, homeownership is a whole other issue.
Yes, but it comes with, with, that you can afford and then you can build upon your credit, et cetera. Yeah.
But the issue of, of housing instability is really an important component. People are living in places and they are scared they will be able to stay there.
Excellent.
Young people want to start a family and have a home. These are, these are very challenging times.
Absolutely.
But the commissioners have been bold, they've stood up and they say they want us to deal with it and we're gonna try.
Yeah, and, and my suggestion is just to put it in the, in the inventory. Then when it comes to existence, as a, as a something that we can track through the years.
And it's also, and it's also where you place it, how you arrange it and what it looks like. I mean, Stephen, as a developer knows that, I mean, we have to also take a look at what these, what we do moving forward. So people say, this is okay in my community on multiple levels.
Any other comments or questions for Austin on the inventories? For board members, anybody online, anybody here?
Thank you, Austin.
Thanks, Austin.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, next up is our, uh, community planning update. Well, I am Lobero and call on Tim, morning Tim. Hey, good, Tim.
Good, how about you?
Hey, good, Stan.
Hello, thank you. All right, so I'm Tim Kenechi, Senior Community Planner here. Um, I took over Amblerboro from Chloe, um, just about a year ago now, I think it was last November. Um, so really kind of at a, a crossroads when it comes to the projects. So, okay, I do this right now.
They're having their first Friday on, uh, October fourth, right?
Yeah, yep. So they, they have all sorts of active events. Um, I'm sure everybody knows where Ambler is, but it's up here, um, in the West Second School District. Um, so that's along with Witpane and Lower Gwinnett Townships. Um, it's surrounded by Lower Gwinnett, um, just kind of touches Witpane here and then Upper Dublin on the three other sides. Yes.
It's got special, I'll say next slide.
All right, next slide please. Thank you. All right, so, um, we did start the comp plan earlier this year, so I have the benefit of a little bit of demographic analysis, um, where there's some, some interesting, uh, data points, I think. So, um, Ambler's grown by a bit over six percent over the last decade. Um, and actually, at their current population of sixty-eight hundred, that's the highest population since their kind of industrial peak in the seventies. Um, there was really a kind of a population crash, kind of stagnancy for close to fifty years. And now, um, they've hit their highest population ever, um, at sixty-eight hundred. So, um, really, you know, positive, uh, outlook there. Um, when looking at neighbors, Ambler has a lower median age, a lower share of senior population. Uh, there's more young people and young families. Um, and then there's also a lower median income. There's a higher share of the population that's in poverty. I mean, a higher share of the population that receives SNAP benefits as well. Um, so that is a common relationship we see where the dense boroughs kind of, um, you know, they have the lower housing prices, it's more, uh, affordable. Um, just kind of, you know, cost of living. Um, but there's still the benefit of being in the school district, um. And let's see, what else do I have? Okay, so the biggest, um, trend of concern is housing prices for residents. Um, we've done some kind of, you know, initial outreach, um, with, related to the TOD. Um, and that was something that kept coming up. Um, so I did a little bit of a deep dive there. So between two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and twenty-two, there was about seven hundred and sixty-four home sales. The median price has gone up by forty-six and a half percent when, after you adjust for inflation, um, over that timeframe. So that's obviously, um, becoming more and more of a burden on long-term residents, um, and prospective new residents, of course.
That forty-six percent is exactly for?
It is, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Twenty-two percent of households with a mortgage are cost burdened, so that's paying more than thirty percent of their, uh, monthly income on housing costs. And astoundingly, forty-two percent of renters are also spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing costs. So that's just kind of laying the ground, um, there. Uh, some recent planning work. Uh, next slide please, thank you. Um, this is something that Chloe had actually done. Um, so there's the Parks and Open Space Plan that was completed in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, this included an inventory of open spaces, which is actually almost twenty-four acres in Ambler, so that's a good amount for such a small borough. Um, there's natural resource inventory, um, a lot of waterways across the Ambler, which of course leads to stormwater issues, um, but it's also a benefit. There's a strong emphasis on looking at potential open space linkages, um, for bikes, pedestrians and via trail. So that's, uh, the Green Ribbon Trail, which is nearby, um, and then Spring Garden Street and Ambler Road, uh, Bethlehem Pike and Lynn Lock Ash, Lock Elch Avenue in particulars. I'm just kind of, you know, spreading out from the borough, interconnecting everything. I did look at potential open space acquisitions, but at this point, that's really limited to pocket parks. Um, they've had a lot of success with that. Um, and they really kind of just want to build on that concept. And then there's goals and, and implementation plan as well. Next slide please. Going along with this, there is what was called the Park Supplement. So there's both an online version that goes through this and then there's a print copy. Um, and the idea here is it's kind of a combination of an executive summary and then also kind of a step-by-step implementation guide. So it's something that's really, you know, it's a lot shorter for one, so you can just pick it up and you can actually glean information without having to see all these charts about demographic information, everything. It kind of cuts through all that and gets right to the deliverables, so to speak. So they were really happy with this. There's lots of graphics and photos. Um, and like I said, the biggest thing is just like that step-by-step, you know, go to this park, do this, and then that, and then that. Which, next slide please. Uh, it's the same kind of idea we're going into the comprehensive plan with as well. We really want to focus on the implementation and like the outcomes rather than, um, you know, do, we, of course, we'll do all the analysis and everything, um, but we really want to put kind of, you know, this is what you need to do first at the front of the plan. Um, which is something MCPC has done a really good job with over the last, you know, maybe decade, I would say. Um, but that's just kind of how comp plans are changing with time, really focus on implementation rather than, you know, three hundred pages of all this great information and analysis we did. We really want to know, you know, what should we do over the next ten years? But this process, you know, we're all ready to go. We started in January, um, and then we immediately paused it because Septa came in with the idea of redeveloping their surface parking lot. Um, so we got through demographic analysis, schedule, timing, and then we paused it. So, um, you have the little chart there showing the timing. Now, we did pick this up at this last meeting in September. Um, so now we're starting to plan for public outreach. Um, this process is probably going to go through two thousand and twenty-six. Um, and there's going to be probably a lot of public outreach. So when we did the, um, Septa event, which I'll get to next, um, they actually mailed everybody in the borough, uh, like a notice saying, here's an open house on this date at this time. Um, so they want to do the same kind of thing here. Um, and with actually with the Parks Plan as well, they basically made campaign signs and put them all around the borough as well. Uh, so there's really an emphasis on getting meaningful public input in Ambler. Um, so I think that'll kind of guide this whole process. Um, and that might lead us to, um, specific topic areas like the TOD area, uh, the Asbestos Mountains, of course, which nobody knows what to do with. Um, and then just their downtown, you know, how to enhance that because they really have such a good thing going. Next slide please. All right, so, uh, this is really when I wanted to focus on the potential redevelopment of the surface lot in Ambler or at Ambler Station. Um, so basically, just the quick history, Septa kind of approached the borough in two thousand and twenty-two, um, with some kind of, you know, broad ideas about their transit oriented communities program, um, just looking at the footprint and already the, the existing conditions of, you know, having a successful downtown to leverage for this development. You know, they already kind of had that captive market there. Um, so they see this, and I think there's eight other stations that they're also looking at through this TOC, um, program. Um, so basically, we're working with Jen Dogerty, AICP Strategic Planning and Analysis Long Range Manager at Septa, um, and Kenny. Um, and Kenny Starr, the Manager of Joint Real Estate Development. Um, when they came to the borough, they had the idea for mixed use. Um, basically just de-emphasizing surface parking and getting more potential riders, you know, um, on that three and a half acres. Um, four acres when you take it all into account. Um. Immediately, there's issues with the zoning, basically you couldn't get a mixed-use TOD with the current conditions, um, which is what both the borough and SEPTA wanted. Um. And then. We, we said, you know, this is great that this is what SEPTA wants, this is what the Borough Administration wants. Um, let's check what the what the public wants, and SEPTA was very receptive to that, um, so next slide, please. Uh, on the thirtieth of January this year, we did um kind of do a joint open house with SEPTA, it was definitely framed as SEPTA's event. Um, but Borough Staff and Officials and then MCPC, of course, had a strong presence as well. Um, so Scott came, Andrew, Chloe and Claire all came out, helped out, so thank you again for that. Um. We estimate two hundred attendees, and then, like I said, this was on uh January thirty, so it was cold, uh, it's dark, but we had huge attendance. Um, and remarkably, it was a good reception, you know, I think the, just the transparency, going out there and saying, hey, you know, maybe this is going to be a huge building. Um, but we want to know what you want in it, basically, so it takes a lot of that um. Kind of like othering of like, oh, they're coming in, putting this here, you know, when you're you're at that ground floor, talking about what you want to see as part of it, really was meaningful. Um, they did a great job, they had thirteen posters, tons of information, and then there was four like direct feedback posters like this one, where there was the write-in answers. Um. We, for our part, MCPC had a a lot of information on our TOD model ordinance, um, we had some homes for all information as well. Um, so we were just kind of acting as that bridge where, you know, we're not necessarily, you know, championing this TOD project. Um, this is SEPTA coming in at the ground level, um, but we want to help, but we want to be there to facilitate and get what the borough wants, you know, so. Um, just kind of threading that needle of saying, you know, we're always doing this with Ambler's interest, um, although, of course, SEPTA's in the room. Um, I would encourage you to check out the um the SEPTA. Oh, it might be cut off. Um. Oh, actually, no, it's just my notes. Uh, SEPTA has a dedicated uh Ambler Station uh project website. Um. If you go to their Transit Oriented Communities Program website, you can go into that, and they actually have all of the boards um without markups posted, and then they have a summary of the open house. So they have all of those notes, like, you know, transcribed, um, and just to kind of a summary of the events. Next slide, please. Uh, so this is what SEPTA had come with initially, um, and this is what was presented at the open house, so you can see how it could be kind of scary, you know, this is roughly three and a half acres here, and if this is. All building, that's going to, you know, impact the skyline, um, and the um, the Boiler House is down here, so that's something that we're always kind of thinking about. Um, turns out it's about a hundred and eighty feet. What was that?
Butler's top quarter.
Yeah, but, oh, sorry, yeah, Butler's here, um, and then Main Street's here, and Butler is the main street in Ambler, so you come in, I'll cross the tracks here, and then the surface parking's all kind of hidden back here.
It's about four acres, three and a half between three and a half and four acres.
Yeah, so this, this is three and a half acres here, um, the parts that they plan to use, so I guess there's a little bit extra with this blue here and here, and then this is another half acres up here.
They don't, they're not talking that including that.
So this, this part they are talking about, but it would just be um stormwater management, actually, is their their plan right now, because. Um. The tannery run actually runs under most of uh Butler Avenue, so it's it's um, it's under some buildings here. And then there's a freight house here and then an outlet, so they're going to move the old freight house and then totally redo that culvert. So they're kind of trying to pull all this into one larger project to really address, um, I guess, kind of what's kind of a choke point there, I guess, I would say. Um, so if they could naturalize this and then kind of interconnect to the um, the waterway back here is their ultimate goal.
What I meant with the two uh ochre colored ones, they're both set for a three and a half, four acres.
Oh, this is, yes.
Both of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but they're kind of, they are looking at their whole footprint, though, yes, yeah, yeah, thank you for clarifying. Um, let's see, next slide, please. Uh, so the open house findings um went right into what we ended up writing for them, so uh mixed use was a huge priority. Specific ideas were uh senior housing, uh daycare, uh recreation center, whether that's for residents or. Um, you know, like the general public, like a kind of fitness potentially. Um, stormwater management was a huge concern, you know, everybody acknowledges this is three and a half acres of impervious, so it can pretty much only get better, but they want to make sure that. You know, it's meaningful, um, and then, you know, just ideally, it doesn't make anything worse. Um, housing affordability was huge as well, um. That's come up time and again, as I've continued to meet with Borough Council as well and their planning commission, and just residents coming out to. All of those meetings and asking for it, essentially. Um, desire, of course, to reflect Ambler's tradition, so there's a lot of stone and brick. Um, certain amenities, open spaces, and then just the general concept of making this a real gateway into the borough, because when you come in, there, you know, the railroad's the first thing you see. Um, so it would be really good if you can enhance that with some, you know, uh, whether that's a Mary Ambler statue or just a welcome to Ambler or a fountain, something they um. They really want to emphasize this as, you know, potentially kind of like a a keystone um anchor for the new end of Main Street, I guess I would say. Um. And then the ordinance revisions uh reflect that, so it's actually going to a public hearing next week. Um, this, like I said, we probably started in. March, and then it was ultimately agreed upon in in July, so a pretty quick turnaround. Um, with the comprehensive planning process, we really, we kind of wanted to put the Band-Aids on it and get it as close to perfect as we could without opening up the whole ordinance, so. Um, we will be looking at this again for the comp plan, um, but for now, we, you know, revised the dimensional standards, we added a mixed-use requirement and an active storefront requirement. Um, we reduced the parking requirements significantly and added unshared use options. Um. Expanded the. What was that?
What's the essential then?
So thirty-five dwelling units per acre is the the baseline, and then there's a a bonus to get you up to fifty. Um, the bonus is something that we spent a lot of time on, um, so. In order to get that, you can either um go for lead gold certification, um, create a connection across the tracks, because that was something that the the residents also talked about. Just kind of having to do a U-turn to get from the northbound, southbound side of the tracks. Um. Housing affordability. Um. On-site renewable generation, expanded public gathering space. A handful of other options, was that? Sixty-five feet, yeah, so that was existing conditions as well, so that was kind of the constraint we were working under, keeping the density the same and the the ultimate height the same. Um, just kind of make it a smoother process, and both of those have come up. Um, I think the density is a little harder for people to kind of wrap their heads around, especially with such a big, big site.
So on the high end, they're talking about supporting hundred sets of two hundred units.
Correct, yeah. Um, so we're, we have been working with with SEPTA, they they um. They're working on the RFP, I think that was. Okay, it ends uh June, so now sometime this fall, we should expect the RFP um from their end of things. Um, and we really haven't gotten a lot of input on, um, you know, how we met there, all their checkboxes, but going into it. Um, this is what the community wants, so that's ultimately what made it into the ordinance.
Would you say the community wants us to visit any? Elected officials in the borough or?
So it was like the citizens.
Total understanding from the public meeting in January that people are open to having a hundred and fifty to two hundred units on on the acres.
Yeah, ultimately, it was mostly the open house, um, we're just just having kind of specific write-ins from, you know, just somebody who lives in Ambler saying, yes, I would love, you know, another. Uh, handful apartments, because there's not enough apartments, let alone four-to-wall apartments. Um, so I think there is, oh, sorry.
A handful of apartments or a hundred fifty?
I think that, yeah, I think they understand the, how big the site is, so, um. And there, it has been reflected in the um, in the press as well, there was, you know, a flashy headline. You know, paves the way for apartments in Ambler, um, which ultimately, yes, but I think um reasonably, um, with all these controls.
The one issue, one, one issue, it's been, I mean, I guess they're anticipating the use of the train station. Um. But the road with the road systems around there are are difficult.
Absolutely.
You know, it's not like being in some of these other TODs that we've seen, where you have somewhat of a. You know, a better, you know, your network, but, you know, Butler Pike and the finger, the finger roads come off Butler into Ambler and to get to. To get out to um Beth Iron Pike or. Um, towards wherever you want to go, it's just difficult.
Really is.
Not an easy location.
Yes, I think there's, it's going to have to be a lot of looks at the transportation studies, because it it backs up so badly right now.
Yeah.
So once you introduce potentially two hundred more residents or something. Um, there is a lot, we did put in uh Transportation Impact Study, Parking Generation Study requirements, but um ultimately, this will be a lot of, lot of review.
Who's the applicant for this, on the works? This is the borough?
Yeah, so the borough just, uh, they're the ones who, yeah, the planning commission.
And you said that guy Ken Starr, is that? Is that a developer?
No, he works for SEPTA.
He works for SEPTA.
Mm-hmm.
So what are they going to do, send this out like a master development, I believe, or?
Um, so they, yeah, uh, right now, we know they're going to do an RFP, I think the idea is they're going to keep the land, um, and then do a long-term lease, yeah, so. Um. We'll see, and there, they actually removed the timeline, but initially, it was construction slate for twenty thirty-two, so we'll, we'll see what that goes updated to, yeah.
One thirty.
Yeah. But that, now, like I said, now that's off the website, so I don't know what the new plan is. Okay. And then, um, last slide is just the the contract terms for the next um three years, so standard uh two-night plan it is, two-night meetings, like Eric.
Any questions for Tim on the on Amblerborough? Or members? Anybody? What's up? Uh, yeah, one question, what's, do you have a sense about the. Occupancy or vacancy radius for the commercial spaces on Main Street?
Yeah, so they, they say a hundred percent occupied, um, SEPTA actually in there, in the first packet they had um for the open house. There, I I'm not sure what they cited, but they said a hundred percent occupancy on um Butler and Main Street, yeah. There are some, but I think they're actually like getting redone, so I'm not aware of any that are just like for rent.
Yeah.
I'll just drive me through.
If you visited Ambler over the past twenty, twenty, thirty years, it's really remarkable.
Oh, yeah.
Those which ones have uh staying power, well, restaurants change anyway, but if um, it it's just, it's interesting, the the issue.
Yeah.
I'm always in the last, I never travel once. Maybe I'm not there where you are, but I.
Yeah, that's, that's a big concern with uh SEPTA starting a charter again for parking, actually, because that's where most people were parked, we get them, so.
I park in the, I'm okay, very much.
Yeah.
That's it, that's it, you know, I just. Igravation versus pain, you know, a cup of coffee or parking, really? But um, the issue of affordability is really, I mean, Ambler was considered in that community, Upper Dublin and within it, it was affordable, that's for people who. You know, wanted walkable affordability and the question is. But to, people ever talk about, and I don't know. If this has been a conversation, it's allowed, where, let's say you have a hundred fifty units, if you say there's a certain percentage that need to be whatever we consider affordable or whatever. Say it's five percent, every, uh, we always so much multifamily all over, if the, there were units in every one of these places, five percent. So there were four units or seven units or whatever, and this was spread out through all these places. Some people have, of course, some people don't have, of course, so you make your decisions accordingly, but do people talk about that?
They do, um, there's the, there's, especially from Borough Council, there is the desire to, you know, try, try to push that envelope, actually, and get, and. You know, get that out of this sort of development. Um, I think we're just, we're really bound by the municipality's planning code. Um, not being able to require a for, like, that set percent without some sort of bonus.
You're not.
It's not specifically enabled by the MPC to, like, so we couldn't require five percent with every development unless there was um like a given take, so the bonus system in this case.
It has to, it has to be put forth in some kind of model ordinance, and a municipality would have, would have to edit and. Adopt it, because there's, it's not something that that's made, that can be mandated.
I think they should develop a model ordinance that would.
Well, you're right, there's no clear support or legal backing for that, so that's kept it from happening, so every strategy has been.
But the state depends, right, the other states that have got it, got it into state legislative, well, like that one, work, work, house.
It's especially the governor's office.
Oh, I think it should be.
This is something that has, you know, caught some legs, it's just a matter of. How long it takes to actually. Implement anything that has teeth, other than to get the voluntary. Adoption of some ordinances that require or give incentives to create, to create affordable housing, so.
Many years ago, I was in Boston, a friend of mine was an architect, and he said, um, uh, municipal, well, he was in Boston, and he said, which ones are affordable? And I said, I don't know, and he said, that's, that's why we do it this way, and they're in there.
Yeah.
And but they have the enabling, like, ways, you know, whatever to do it, but to me, that. Very simplistically, it seems like I could.
No, that has to be paid for, too, and so boss developer can only do so much, so I raise the rates, the market rate, but.
Well, that's the bonus system, they're allowing more units or whatever, so you not work, so, yeah.
Yeah. Well, somebody has to pay for something, you know, I mean, in this world, we have to pay for things, and it's a social problem, it's an issue.
And residents have to authorize the density bonuses, you know, and approve and.
It's complicated, yeah.
And 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 voluntarily won't happen. Or will it will happen? And was never happened voluntarily.
Well, look, I mean, it'll, it'll happen if the carrot is big enough.
Exactly.
So. But carrot has to be.
There are, there are examples.
Somebody to pick bite at it, you know, but right now, those, those are. Small, or those are few and far between right now, and I think, but there is a, there tends to be some momentum. To, to, on this issue, to have some type of incentive process in, in, in multifamily housing or housing affordability, but. Once again, I mean, it's, it's, it's working at a glacial pace, not at a revolutionary pace. Which, but the revolutionary pace was needed. Yeah. Any other comments or questions for Tim?
Does it make you want to move to Ambler?
It does, I I really like it, yeah, yeah, they're great.
I'm just telling people, you know, like fifteen years ago, eighteen years ago, twenty years ago, and you did it. For it.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Like, it's like an art.
I just went to a Peruvian restaurant.
What's it, what's it really?
Heronimosis.
I wanted to.
Yeah, the, the owner, I know the owner. Yeah.
What's it is?
I'll meet you.
Heronimos. Heronimos. Heronimos, heronimos.
Oh, well, you can say it better than I do, and it's near the parking lot.
Very much brought to the theater, it's fantastic.
Seventy dollars for a cocktail, but, you know, not, no, I'm not paying for it.
I just recommend.
I'll park like a mile away, free parking.
Yeah.
Park in the center.
I'll take you to your heart.
Park in the center. Friday, it's Mark in the center.
Yeah, the problem is, if Ambler by SEPTA is, I think, you leave the center city and then come back.
Look at this.
I would ride, I would ride, I would ride my bike. Who the heck's going to want to sit next to me after I run my bike? I'll be down those hills.
Cassandra's sitting next to him.
Well, if I'm not dead from a heart attack, I'll be steady.
How much public is listening to this?
Yeah, absolutely, a lot of people are.
We're having a good time out there, Tom.
So we're going to move on to our next agenda, you know. Um. And that is Matt Edman on the tip adoption update. Hey, go, Matt.
Doing all right? Good morning, Steve, good morning, board, good to see you all today. Glad everyone's awake, someone brought in the huge cookies, that's always a bonus.
Yeah.
So we are going to take a little bit of time to talk about the tip, the Transportation Improvement Program. And uh, we're going to start off by giving everyone just a quick uh run-through and reminder of what the tip is. And then we're going to look at three different things, where we've been, where we are now, and where we're going. So Scott, I hear that you are the human clicker. But we are going, you're going to be using that finger quite a bit, clicking off uh very fast, especially the first couple of slides. So let me jump in, well, that's a little too fast. All right, well, you guys saw it all, so I think we're done. Okay, so what is the tip? Uh, uh, Sandra, I know that uh you're new to the board, and so I want to make sure that uh more than anyone else here, uh, you understand what this is. But to try and help inform and educate, but everyone else on the board, you've seen this before, but this is also a good reminder, so next slide. So just a couple of quick facts about the tip, just to give you a a very basic framework. Um, one is that it's the region's capital budget for state and transportation, state and federal transportation funds. That's what it is, guys, it's a budget, it's not a magical document, it's got a whole list of projects, it's got numbers attached to those projects. And whoever worked in governments, even uh pri- uh nonprofits or the private sector, you know, you have a budget to work with, and every year you got to put numbers to your budget. The tip is no different than that, don't think of it as anything uh more than something that you're familiar with, next slide. Uh, the second thing you need to know is that it's part of the region's planning process, so the tip is not a document that sits. Uh, the second thing you need to know is that it's part of the region's planning process. So the tip is not a document that sits in and of itself. Uh, it is inextricably linked with both connections twenty fifty, which is the region's long range plan. Uh, but it also is fed in part by our own county comprehensive plan, Monco twenty forty. Uh, a project cannot get in the tip unless it is typically in Monco twenty forty. And then we, being myself and Andrew and Matt and Loreen, elevate it into the tip through a a regional process. Or actually into the long range plan through a regional process, and then it's eligible to be on the tip. So it's not a standalone document. It's not a wish list. These projects that are in the tip have been thoroughly vetted from a planning standpoint. Next. You need to know that it contains eight different sections, one for each county. So projects that are specifically in Montgomery County are in Montgomery County's section. Uh, but then it also has three other sections that people tend to forget about. One is various, which might be uh uh the regional projects, maybe softer projects, not so much hard infrastructure. Um, for instance, you know, if uh if you have a project to replace bridges in three counties, it's gonna show up in the various. Uh, the interstates. So one of the things that Penn Dot Central Office started doing about maybe seven, eight years ago is they took a little bit of everyone's tips, take the cream off the top. Send it back to Harrisburg, and then they program it on the interstates, because what we were finding out statewide was that some regions were pretty good about tackling. Maintenance problems on their interstates. Other regions, they weren't touching them. So something like I eighty, for instance, might span maybe five or six different. MPOs or RPOs, those are regional planning organizations. Um, and some regions might be keeping up I eighty really well, and then you get to the next one, and it's all pothole city. So. Uh, Penn Dot started taking that money off and then giving it back and determining how to fix the interstates. So we have a section that's just dedicated to improving things like the Blue Route and the Skooko. And then transit, SEPTA has a capital budget. They have a one point one plus billion dollar budget, uh, and it has to show up. The capital side has to show up in the tip because it's federal and state money, transportation dollars. So eight sections, that's what they look like. Next slide. It covers twelve years, guys. This is really important. So um if you have county, for instance, Montgomery County has a a one year capital budget and a five year capital plan, right? Year one, you know, every year they update the budget, so we're doing that now. Twenty twenty five budget's gonna get approved in probably November or December. And it's also gonna be projecting out four years beyond that. Think of the tip as the same way. It is a two year budget and twelve year capital plan. So that's the example of one of the entries. We just picked one that actually uh our team is overseeing, and you can see that there's twelve years there, three groups of four. And then there's lots lots of different codes there, which are the phases of a project. Uh, right of way, utility, construction, there's a couple other ones for design, uh, the funding code, there's a thousand different funding flavors of federal and state money. Uh, and then, you know, there's dollar amounts slotted into each of those or some of those twelve years for those phases. So that's what it is. Every two years this gets re redone, and so really it's a two year budget and a twelve year plan. That takes me to the next slide. Which is that it's updated every two years, as you can see, and then the slide after that. It's a budgeting tool and not a construction timetable. So Scott, I want you to go back two slides. Well, we're gonna.
Things are not difficult. Everything has to go forward, now you make them go backwards.
We'll be fast. The more we talk, the the longer this gets. So. So if if you had a project, if you had a project set construction and I had it like here in twenty thirty one, it doesn't mean anything. It means it's stuck there in twenty thirty one, and every two years when you revise it, you get a better sense of where you are, and then you start bringing those dollars back. So go ahead, two slides. Here goes, Steve. It's a budgeting tool, not a construction timetable. If your favorite project is in there with construction in year twelve, don't freak out. Doesn't mean it's gonna take twelve years to get there. Next slide.
But if Matt couldn't take it, uh, on the projects that are way out, could they never come into existence? They just keep out there?
Yeah, we've had it. We've had entries in the tip that have shown construction wherever they can find money just to slot it. And if the project development doesn't keep moving, then yeah, you just keep pushing out every two years when you update the tip. It happens. Yep. But the reverse happens too, where you make progress on things and it just starts moving closer, right?
I get here, I wish I would have kept pushing out with my bike.
Gotta get through the pain. Gotta get through the pain sometime. All right, so where have we been? So this is the this the 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 tip. Guys, the tip has been around for decades, right? It's a federally required thing. So you have to think of the cinematic scope of history when you think about the tip. So next slide. This is an important message that we want our board to understand is that. We may not have as much investment in the tip today than we did ten or twenty years ago, but that's because we're actually getting things done, right? That's the 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 flip side to saying, ah, we don't have as much investment in the counties because we had it so much, and we actually did things, we improved things. These are major projects built in less than the last decade. Lafayette Street, Chester Valley Trail, four twenty two River Crossing Complex at Valley Forge. Uh, two two to Cow Pike from literally from Narsetown all the way up to Montgomeryville. There's only another piece of that that's still under construction, but a lot of that's been built through an eye connector phase two, and they're still going on 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 that project. And then Markley Street, which yes, they are doing that one bridge, but Markley Street pretty much has been done. So all of that stuff combined, just off the top of my head, I mean, we're talking over half a billion dollars in investment, just those six projects. And that's all been built in less than the last decade. Next slide. When you total it all up, and Matt and Andrew and Loreen have done a great job of, I gotta give them credit. Most of the numbers you see in here is stuff that they have done, analysis they've done and built on over the last couple of years in these tip presentations we give to you. And so we we added the latest numbers uh in the last fourteen years, one point two eight billion. And the Turnpike, they've invested almost another billion in the uh northeast extension that doesn't even show up on the tip. But we want to put that here because we want you guys to see that, so it's not invisible. And so.
Some of us use that a lot.
Oh, yes, I like it. If you remember the old Turnpike Northeast Extension, the new one is a huge upgrade, right? So like, you know, on the roadway side, um, and that's just roadway numbers, right? That's not even talking transit. That's the roadway numbers, over two two and a quarter billion dollars in investment in our highways and our local roads and our principal arterials, various streets. So a lot of money has come here in the last fifteen years, Scott. So where are we now? In other words, what's in the new tip? Slide? All right, so here's the numbers. Um, we have twenty three point four billion dollars programmed in the twelve years of the new tip. Uh, that was just approved in July by the DVRPC board. It takes effect October first, so in less than a month, the new tip FY twenty five becomes the law of the land. Twenty three and a half billion dollars program. That is a fifteen percent increase from the current one that's about to expire, which was around twenty twenty one billion dollars or so. And we always make sure that you guys see this. The tip, like I said earlier, with that SEPTA category, it's highways and transit in the tip. So we have traditionally in our world, board, staff, we thought the tip is the highway focused, roadway focused investment. But again, you gotta think of of all that SEPTA invests in our system, because without SEPTA's investment every year, we don't have a complete picture of what we invest in transportation in our region and in our county. And so you can see, it's almost one for one, almost, right? Almost twelve billion for highways and SEPTA's capital budget is about eleven and a half billion. All of that is in here. So yeah, twenty three and a half billion dollars in twelve years is set to be invested. Now again, in two years, when we update the tip, those numbers will change, and they could change in different ways for different reasons. So in two years from now, we'll give you what that looks like, but we don't know it yet. It's the future.
Do you have a sense of that fifteen percent? Is that fifteen percent increase due to added projects or increased costs due to inflationary pressures?
A little bit of both, a little bit of both. Um, it's a little bit of inflationary cost, but also the IJA is giving us money. So typically what happens is, like, we will know how much money we have to work with because the feds give information to Penn Dot. Penn Dot calculates stuff and then gives information to the region. So for the most part, that fifteen percent increase is because the IJA is giving us money. Some some of it is.
I want to still have the IJA funding.
Two two more years.
Two more years.
But what happens is, because remember, the IJA is is like, it's special, guys, but it's not special. At its core, it really is just the the federal transportation reauthorization, right? The feds, the Congress, they have a huge spending package that they pass, and that's what all this money comes from. And then it has an expiration date, and then what they do is they just keep extending it until they have no political capital to pass a new one. That's what the IJA was, because a new reauthorization. But they also package the IJA up with special one time funding, all pretty much doubled the amount. And so that's what makes it special, but not special.
Matt?
Yes.
Projects that are on the tip isn't political?
It is not political. It's staff driven. I'll say it's political in the sense that if a municipality speaks up a lot and they advocate for it a lot long enough, eventually our commissioners hear it. We have staff hear it, Scott hears it, uh, you guys hear it, and then it becomes something that's important. Uh, but at the end of the day, projects are advanced because myself and Matt and Andrew and Loreen, we are in the room with our counterparts. In the other counties, in DVRPC and Penn Dot, and we throw out candidate projects. It goes through a overly long uh uh vetting process. And then we all agree as a region which projects we want to add to the tip.
It's elected, it's elected official. Question. Builders through, elected officials and then they.
The county commissions.
Well, whoever, I mean, you know, once it gets into the that's either in the municipalities or. Among many of the state, the uh commerce people, I mean, then it all just filters into the staff that actually puts together the project list, but. You know, it's starts from somewhere.
Yeah, I'm trying to get this. Jonathan, where it's political is where maybe earmarks come in. So projects can usually get on the tip in the process I just outlined. But there's other ways too. There's lots of small grants out there, multimodal fund, LSA, those are two state grants. Our earmarks are back. I remember in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, Congress killed them. Fork barrel spending. Now they've come back the last couple of Congresses. And so those are the political mechanisms which project can get added to tip, but it's completely outside of this regional planning process. So just to just to follow up then, Steve, on on your question. So that number is largely fixed, but projects do go up and that can put pressure. But also there are certain types of IJA grants, like the mega grant. Um, Tiger was a previous version of another grant. When when SEPTA gets a huge one or the city gets a huge one, that's gotta go on the tip, and sometimes that also ups that number too. Okay, lastly, I just want to say there's lots of funding for bridges and bike pad and transit in this new tip, and we're gonna circle back around to that by the end. Scott? All right, so we asked this question two years ago. What did the IJA do for the tip? And the answer was. Plugged a ton of money into it and allowed us to expand and add lots of new projects and actually not cut projects. That was the story two years ago. This time though, it's sort of uh it's sort of following up on that a little bit. There's a new funding stream called Carbon. And that's what we call it, Carbon Reduction Program, but we just call it Carbon because it's too long. So anyway, Carbon is basically meant to do just what it sounds like. It's to make investments in clean energy, uh, in transportation that reduces emissions. And so the region actually banded together. Worked with DVRPC, and we used this huge amount of carbon funding, which is about two hundred million dollars over the course of twelve or thirteen years of the tip. To actually make a huge expansion in our circuit trails. This was a follow up to something that Leo and Leslie were pushing for a decade ago. We got, at that time, we got DVRPC to create a circuit trails line in them, and they funded it with a couple million dollars of CMA. And it was always meant to be a pipeline to get circuit trails built, right? The circuit is eight hundred miles of regional trails. We only built, what's got like a hundred or two hundred miles of it, like not not nearly as much as we should. Skooko River Trail is part of it, Chester Valley Trail is part of it, Perk Island Trail is part of it, Big Trails. So what we said was, hey, look, this is new money to our region. And it can be used on things like trails. So why don't we work together and and have every county, all five, submit projects that are circuit trails? And try to fund them with this. So we have a a dedicated pipeline, but this time, rather than the old way of saying, all right, Montgomery County, for instance. You guys work on a trail, fund your design, fund your right of way, and then when it's ready, we'll just give it construction. Now, we're treating these carbon, these circuit trails, just like we would a road project. It's gonna get funding for all of those phases. It's gonna get a Penn Dot project manager. It's gonna be treated just like a highway expansion or an intersection improvement. Or anything else. And so that's gonna get in the pipeline and moving. And uh what we're gonna see is about thirty eight million dollars of that is gonna come to Montgomery County, and Bill Hartman is gonna use it to pretty much build out most, if not all, of the cross county trail. He's not gonna get all the way there, but he's gonna get a lot of the way there, which is more than we've ever had in the last fifteen years. We got it up to to Germantown Pike. And then it stopped. Now it's gonna continue for many miles beyond that because of this regional effort to use carbon money that came from the IJA. Scott? So when you total the numbers for Montgomery County, right, you saw thirty eight million in carbon just for Cross County Trail. Um, but what it means in the big picture, though, for us, is over the course of the twelve years, one point one eight billion dollars, sixty four projects. The first four years, which are again the most important, because just like the first two years are really important, the first four years still have significance in tip world. Um, because Penn Dot can do certain things with that money. So we're almost half a billion dollars is just in the first four years out of that one point two. And then uh uh over one billion of that one point one eight billion is for construction. So, you know, we're not, we're not spending hundreds of millions of dollars on design right of way. We're spending a lot of that budget terms on actually getting things done.
Not that stuff already designed?
No.
So some we have to pay money to design them.
Sometimes. So mo- most projects, when you update the tip, you give most projects design money in the first two years so that they have the money to get things going. Because if you waited till years three or four, five, six.
When you said that a billion is for construction, I was wondering.
Yeah, it just means the other two hundred million dollars for design. Most of it's probably in the first two years, some could be out. Every project is is budgeted differently, and again, sometimes you do that just because you're like, hey, you know, I gotta put this project's money somewhere. Where do we have a hole?
Well, I you always used to tell us, and Leo used to tell us, if it's designed, you're more likely to get money to get it there.
Well, you will. So so what what happens is if you have money, if you have construction money in your fort, right? And you happen to get it designed, Penn Dot will, they have the statutory ability to then move that money forward and then start construction. That's what that means. You always get it designed because everyone wants to fund a designed project. They don't want to give you construction money if you're still not sure what you wanted to. Next slide, Scott. And when you break that sixty four projects, one point one eight billion dollars down into neat little categories, what are we what are we getting for our money? Um, capacity, which is sometimes a dirty word, has the largest amount of money, but let me tell you something. There's an important number hidden in that six hundred twenty three million that we're not showing you. That number is is what, three quarters of that? It's about four hundred? Four hundred fifty million or something, four hundred seventy five million, and that is going to uh technology, ITS on the Skooko Expressway. Penn Dot doubled down on the money in this tip that they're gonna give to uh uh to District Six to design um uh new bridges. Uh, improve the shoulders, put gantries over there. You guys know the variable speed limit signs have been up for a couple of years. That was sort of the down payment on an ITS investment to make the Skooko flow better. You're looking, Steve, like you're trying to remember.
Never gonna happen. I've been driving the Skooko forever, and it every time they say they're gonna do this and it's gonna make it flow better, it never flows better.
Yeah, well, they haven't done much yet, and so.
They haven't previously committed five hundred million dollars to it, so.
Lanes, they widen shoulders, I mean, it's. Yeah, so I'd be amazed.
It's fine. We're gonna turn you from a skeptic to a believer, just by just by take a look.
Just wait and see.
Just by take a look.
Sounds like traffic engineer voodoo.
Well, the the variable speed limit, I mean. I don't drive the Skooko much anymore, but you go as fast as the car in front of you is going. You you're not looking at, it doesn't say forty five or fifty five.
Yeah.
It's the car in front of you.
Exactly right, yeah.
Nope, and and.
Jonathan.
Guys, Jonathan. Jonathan is exactly right. Those variable speed limit signs don't do much, but that's because they aren't working in conjunction with other things. It's part of a system, and the system hasn't been built yet, and that's the investment in the system. Four hundred seventy five million out of that six twenty three to fix bridges, improve the shoulders, build overhead things. Um, so you can have variable uh 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 lane use, you know, on the shoulders. You can open things up. Other regions do it. We do not. And that's what a lot of that money is going to, a lot of infrastructure.
On the other hand, the signals that say which car can enter, you know, if you have a. Whatever that's called, they work.
Yeah, and that's part of it. That's gonna be part of it too.
Yeah.
Five years from now, I guarantee you, we'll sit in here, I'll be giving the tip presentation, and Steve will be saying, I hate those random meters on the Skooko. Guarantee it. It makes you stop.
They need randomly selected city rating guns on this. So you go, you reduce the traffic.
You heard it here first? All right, so so guys, we'll keep moving on, because I know there's others behind me here, but uh those are the other types of investments we're making in bridges and rehabs and intersections and ITS. Um, and so, you know, products above forty million, which sounds like a random number to use, but actually that's a number that DVRPC is using, so it's random. But it's their random number, and we're just using it as a metric to show big versus small. Um, so those are the five products that are above forty million, a couple of phases of Bridge Pike, three and I connector phase three, which will actually tie um Township Line Road. And Wamboldt Road into three oh nine. That's what phase three is. Um, four twenty two out in the Pottstown area, and then the I seventy six ICM that we just talked about, the technology. Next. New projects? We got three new projects out of this tip update, which is impressive. Now we've had, what, two or three rounds of the tip now where we've gotten something new after going over a decade without anything. Uh, so the Woolgrove Interchange, which is part of the Turnpike Carter Investment Project from twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Um, that now is gonna be in the tip for not a fifty million dollar interchange reimagining, but something much more modest that should. Uh, be fiscally responsible and just as effective. So that's in there, and Upper Morland is happy. Jonathan, that gets. So that's in there and Upper Morland is happy. Jonathan, that gets to your point about politics, right? Upper Morland went out and they got grants to start designing that, but they've been advocating for that for years. It's just been a matter of us working through the bureaucracy to get it in the tip. So we did that. Cross County Trail, we talked about I seventy six flex lanes, we talked about, um, those are some new things that are, that are in here. Next slide. SEPTA, really quick, uh, you know, this is just a rundown of their capital budget and what the tip is doing. This is the second tip in a row. There were, they're over a billion dollars because, um, when Act forty four sunsetted the payments to the turnpike, um, now, uh, SEPTA was able to make up that revenue from a different source and that new revenue was bondable. So they've been bonding more of their revenue to kind of do more capital things at once. So they're over a billion. Uh, for us, you know, there's not a lot of specific projects these days coming out of COVID that are, that are in Montgomery County, uh, but the big one is in the North Sound High Speed Line and rebuilding that and making that better. Um, they also have a lot of money in there for projects of significance, which is really where they're headed. They're going to do less about saying, hey, Monco, you know, we're going to extend this train line in your, 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 your county or we're going to build this garage. Instead, they're thinking holistically, how do we invest in the regional rail system, uh, to make that run more frequently? That's going to be a thirty year effort, but they're programming money into that bus revolution. Same thing, they're putting money into, into that stuff. So that's kind of where they're headed. Um, I don't want to say the part is a footnote, but their budget, what they get from the tip is much, much smaller, but they're a part of it too. And so I will leave that for another time. Scott? So where are we going? Couple more slides and we're done. Um, we said this two years ago, we're going to say it again, our system, like our county and like our region is maturing. We kind of talked a little bit about that in terms of the housing stuff and, and Amber, right? Well, transportation is no different. Um, you know, that, that cartoon is a little funny, but yeah, there's good, there's continuing to be bigger emphasis on maintenance than there is on expansion. And that's part of a maturing system. Next slide. And so that's one of a couple of things that we're going to see more of over the next couple of years as, as this tip unfolds and the, and other tips in the future get enacted. You know, more green energy investments and intersections and bridges and bike pad and ITS, stuff that probably doesn't mean lanes or asphalt. Uh, but hopefully, hopefully means, uh, smarter and better and a little bit cheaper. Next slide. Because that's where the feds are headed. The feds care about safety. They care a ton about safety, guys. Ton, ton, ton. Um, they care about maintenance as well and walking and biking and, and energy and sustainability. That's been a big thing for the Biden administration, right? So those are the things that federal highways have been pushing down, Congress has been pushing down. And it's going to be hard to turn that ship around. So I think we're going to see a lot of that. Scott? So I'm going to leave it now for any questions you guys might have. And this is what we're going to do. We're going to give out, we're just going to give out some gifts. So kudos to Matt and Andrew and to Lorraine. They've updated the tip for us short. You're going to each get one because we love to make sure you guys are not empty handed.
Yes, if you give the, uh, uh, card for free, for, um, free access to the black lane when I say it says.
You know, I'll have to, I'll, I'll have to ask, uh, uh, Secretary Carroll for one of those. I hear he has cars.
I would love that.
Matt, Matt, there was no discussion on political charges.
It is, but it's not quite, like, electric vehicles and charging stations strangle the transportation and energy worlds. So the Inflation Reduction Act, which, you know, not going into politics, but the Inflation Reduction Act isn't really named correct. Right? It was, it was a political gimmick. It really is a green energy bill, which is fine. But a lot of the money for those things come out of the Inflation Reduction Act.
There's a lot of money in the Inflation Reduction Act. For charging taxes.
But those, those sorts of programs don't really be listed in this.
They intersect, but.
Yeah, it's good. It's a good question.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying right now. But having, but it's having difficulty getting implemented.
Starting to percolate.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so Drew's team and my team, you know, Matt, Andrew, Lorraine, John, LeShur, we've all been working together to try to get some of that for the county. It's, it's going to take a while, as Steve said. But it doesn't show up.
Any questions from that? Any other, I should say, any other questions? Any comments or questions from anybody in the room or online?
I, I, I don't know. Well, certainly a question.
Yeah.
The commentary thinking it. What other cities has done? First, I, I mean, it's, it's great to see all the project that has been done since two thousand fifteen. It has been a lot. It has been a lot of the. And I, and even when they, in the sense of the population, some of those projects takes long, like the tour too. That has been a little bit, uh, a project that people wants to see finally done, no? I wonder if in that holistic or integral view of how it's coming to the years, we know that seventy six, there is no place to grow. No. And, uh, I might not, my stress came down when I changed to bike and I take the train, then I don't go to the university, uh, uh, driving. However, in some cities, especially in Brazil and Mexico, some of those expressways has built the second floor. And the second floor, it has that capacity to actually to speed, but also to give the benefit for people to pull, to carpool. And the people to, to use the fast lanes. There is an incentive for the people to use the fast lanes. And that has reduced, the reduce, actually, the, the traffic, it has implemented faster commuting. I am not completely fan of, uh, increasing car capacity more to increase transportation possibilities. But just wondering, I'm thinking, just because the seventy six, well, if I have to drive there, I prefer to have a nice ride through Montgomery Avenue, Lancaster, and then West Philly, and then I am done. No? And I never had to step into the seventy six, but unless it's sixty three, I am on Saturday.
Yeah, elevating seventy six has been discussed. It's not practical or feasible. And so, and I think to your point, you know, they're really, they have no choice from a feasibility standpoint, but I, I think it's also the right approach to, you know, we can no longer build capacity to build us out of our problems. So seventy six is a good example of that. We've got to make it as good as we can and focus on safety. And I, I do think the flex lanes are going to be the game changer and that ramp metering will help with that. Uh, but that's practically the maximum capacity that it can be. And so then they need to look at investing and they are investing in other me- means and methods to not solely rely on seventy six. But it's, it's been a discussion for many years and I'm glad that they're investing the money that they are. And I think they're taking the right approach. It's something that's practical. It's not going to solve all the problems, but it's going to, uh, really focus on safety and a little bit of added capacity, but people are going to have to make other choices.
Yeah. If I could just add something that I think illustrates an issue that you care about. Yeah, it's just that, you know, a lot of talk in the transportation world focuses on things that happen in Sunbelt cities because that's the places that are growing where a lot of things happen. And so like you couldn't get a ten million highway in Philadelphia because we built our highways early on and everything's grown up around it. So a lot of the, 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 the options and the possibilities that are out there, people talk about, they just don't quite apply here. So it makes the challenge for our region, our county, that much.
Yeah.
Drive in LA where they have twelve lanes.
Right.
Not so fun.
So we want to do our opposite. County's what we're planning on being. Morning, Drew.
Good morning, everybody. I get to tell Scott? Yep.
It's a banner morning already.
All right. Well, good morning. Uh, there are a few things going on stormwater wise in Montgomery County, some, uh, major projects. And, uh, this one is just, I mean, it's underway, but it's, it's early on. So we thought, uh, presentation was warranted and we're interested in hearing what your thoughts and comments might be on some of the aspects of the planning. So I wanted to talk to you about the county stormwater management planning update. Next. Uh, next. So this is an ARPA funded project. We applied for the money that the county got through ARPA. We received four hundred fifty thousand seven hundred dollars. Um, and that's, it's an important consideration because, uh, ARPA had certain, uh, criteria, certain parameters that we had to meet, uh, very much focused on, uh, addressing the impacts of COVID. COVID doesn't necessarily directly impact stormwater, but stormwater directly impacts a lot of strategies to help people cope with the pandemic. And so we, we had to kind of tailor our, our application to, uh, promote those. And it, and it does, as you'll see, affect what we're doing. Um, and it was a competitive process, uh, process. So we couldn't really ask for, you know, millions of dollars. We had to kind of tailor to what we thought we'd be able to get. Next, Scott? So what we came up with was a, a, a planning, uh, effort, a planning update, uh, effort. It involves, as you see there, reviewing the existing plans, existing ordinances, uh, looking for significant county level stormwater issues. We're not looking, uh, for the intersection that floods uh, every time it rains or, you know, the, the side of the road that gets, uh, we can't use all the lanes because one lane gets flooded. We're looking for significant county level stormwater issues. Uh, there, we need to consider the changes in frequency and intensity of rainfall, which have been occurring, uh, over the last few decades, uh, as we've all experienced. And the changes in regulatory requirements, DEP, for example, is updating the MS four uh, permit, uh, requirements, uh, they'll eventually come out and, uh, we'll have to, uh, address them. Uh, so again, this is planning, uh, or planning for, uh, county level mitigation solutions and recommendations for large scale, uh, stormwater issues. We are coordinating with the municipalities and other stakeholders. We have quite a stakeholder committee and, uh, one good point is, uh, we're, we're, we're asking for more, but we ask the municipalities for their data. We're asking to produce everything. And then we're going to weed out what we need to, uh, uh, address with this project. And hold the other, uh, information aside for the moment and we anticipate applying for Act one sixty seven planning, uh, funding through DEP. Uh, if you're not familiar, Act one sixty seven is the watershed based stormwater management planning program that DEP operates. They've begun to, uh, fund that again after about ten years of not funding it through growing greener. Uh, so we're holding the data back and, uh, next year, uh, we, we anticipate applying for that to do an Act one sixty seven planning update for the county. Next, Scott? Little bit of background, uh, this planning update will target, eventually we will identify and target the top sixty problem areas that are identified and, and do, uh, a very, uh, simple hydrologic and hy- hydraulic analysis. Uh, it will involve some field work, field investigations to get the existing conditions and try to determine what the cause of those sixty problem areas are. We will develop plan, as I said, planning level solutions. And this, this outreach and this project is including about forty three municipalities in the county. Um, if we don't include the, the Perkyaman watershed, and I'll get to that in just a moment. But I want to point out, this isn't exactly an Act one sixty seven plan for the county. There are certain parts of Act one sixty seven, which we're not addressing here, again, because of those parameters with, uh, ARPA. And it's not an engineering study for, you know, all of the stormwater projects that could be done in the county. Uh, we are trying to focus on getting, identifying potential solutions and bringing them along with the idea that based on this study, we can, and, and the, uh, the solutions that are, uh, we got one more, Scott. Yeah. Um, based on the solutions that are, uh, flushed out at, at a planning level that we can go for funding or municipalities can go for funding, uh, to actually implement these solutions in, in the, in the, uh, report. So now, next one. Don't know why that big blue block is up there. Uh, it's not on the slide, but it says, why isn't Perkyaman Creek included here? This is a, this is a interesting technology. This is a, uh, this is a matter of timing, mostly a matter of timing and some different grant programs. We did get a, a large grant, a million dollar grant to do, uh, the Perkyaman Creek mapping and flood study. And that was through, uh, Representative Joe Webster that we received that. It's a DEP unsolicited grant. Uh, we have the ARPA grant as well. The timing of the ARPA grant is very tight. It needs to be, the funds need to be spent by, uh, the end of twenty twenty six. No extensions are possible. With the DEP grant for the Perkyaman study, it took over a, almost over a year just to get DEP's grant, uh, uh, sorry, contract in place. It was, I don't know if they're not used to unsolicited grants or, or what, but it was just a huge, huge process to get that contract in place with the county. Um, so there's a, there's, there's the issue of timing. Uh, we are going to go for an extension, uh, for the, um, Perkyaman study just because of that delay. Uh, the Perkyaman study is much, much bigger and comprises four counties, fifty five municipalities, as you see there. Uh, this one, the ARPA grant study for the planning update is, is all within Montgomery County. So there were some differences and it made it very difficult to combine the two. Eventually, as I said, with the data we collect from both of these, we feel we'll be well positioned to put them all together into a county Act one sixty seven update.
I'm trying to keep, I, I don't know if I'm the densest person here. There are three. There's the ARPA grant. There's the Webster grant for a million dollars, which is beyond our county. And then eventually there will be a one sixty seven. But that's only going to be for the county. One sixty seven.
One sixty seven.
So the whole issue of watersheds not being just county based, I mean, we're back into this craziness.
Well, yes and no. I mean, we'll, we'll have the Perkyaman flood study, which is watershed based.
But won't there be gaps in the, in the information? Because that does one set. Everything outside, everything in the county will be covered by the same things.
Right.
But all these, these peripheral areas will have one group or another, but not every.
Right. Except for when we do, let's, let's just say when we get to the point where we're doing the Act one sixty seven plan for the county and we get to the Nishami Creek. Bucks County has an updated plan for their portion of the Nishami Creek and the results of that study, the modeling and so on will be incorporated into ours.
Okay.
Um, and especially, uh, maybe the Swamp Creek is a better example. Because Burke's County's flows come into Montgomery County. The Shamy, our flows are going out into Bucks County, but we will incorporate the, the flow information from upstream because we have to, we're doing it anyways. So, but so there is a certain amount of comprehensiveness.
Right. Something different than a comprehensive plan. Do your bike plan, you do whatever. And then at some point you update your comprehensive plan and incorporates all those studies.
And in the co- comprehensive plan, we do tend to look at at least what's just over the.
Geography is different.
Yeah. But that, but that'll get, that'll get piled into the act.
Well, that's because it's just our county.
Right, right, right. So.
Yes, but what, but there'll be areas, what I'm saying is there'll be areas in the DEP.
Act one sixty seven.
Yeah, that is beyond that. And those counties will take that information and use it in there.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and, and they are. Bucks County, Bucks County is updating some of their planning right now with the growing greenery funding. Uh, Delaware County is updating theirs. Chester County is considering it. So that eventually we'll have some consistent coordinated stormwater management planning to a degree in Southeast. It'll take a while.
Do we have a, and any guess when this one sixty seven will be completed or all the documents are put together?
Well, we need to, well, we'll, we'll need to apply next year for the phase one funding and phase one is putting together the work program. And then after that, we do the plan. So it's probably, you know, two years out, uh.
Twenty eight?
Twenty, yeah, twenty, twenty eight probably is. Next. And go on to the next. I have title slides. You can just skip right through them. So our process, and to let you know where we are and to let you know where we want to hear from you, we're just winding up the data collection and, and review portion of this. We sent out a survey and we're gathering all sorts of data from the municipalities. Uh, and as I mentioned, what we need to do is sort through that and identify the top issues that we want to address. And, and I would like to hear from you, uh, now or afterwards, you know, what you consider to be important factors in that consideration. You know, is it blocking off roadways that give us access to emergency, uh, vehicles or hospitals? Is it damage to property? Is it loss of life? Is it all of the above? So put your thinking caps on and I would like to hear from you. What you would. What you would consider to be important factors in identifying. Problem areas. Once we get those problem areas identified. They will be analyzed, uh, the conditions that cause the problem areas will be identified and then potential mitigation strategies will be worked out. Uh, that will, they'll all be compiled into a summary of findings, recommendations and, uh. Particularly implementation recommendations and that will all go into the planning. Update. If I didn't mention, I think I skipped this, I, I didn't mention it, we have HRG, uh, as our contractor. Uh, and it's interesting because they, they rose to the top when we evaluated. Responses to an RFP for the Perkiomun flood study, so they were selected for Perkiomun and Bucks County has them selected for their stormwater. So they're one company working on three different large-scale plans in two counties, which. It's very confusing for them, but it's a benefit for us. Next, Scott. It's interesting. And so we've been collecting the data, we put together a nice survey with people could scan and we can get in multiple ways and respond. Of those forty-three municipalities, we have twenty-eight responses and. We are continually bugging the other municipalities for their responses because we need that data. It needs to be, uh, formatted in some cases because people use different platforms. Uh, but eventually we, we will weed out from their problem area designations, the top ones that we're going to be working on. Next. Sorry about that, I don't know why that's. Yes, speaking in tongues, thank you, uh. Yeah, so as I said, we're, we're going to identify the top sixty problem areas. Uh, and we're identifying that criteria to narrow them down. Uh, right now, the, the problem areas, all of them, as I said, will be preserved as a database for future planning purposes. So we're trying to gather as much data as we can to use in the future. I don't, I, you know, I'm not sure if the fence is, is, has broken free there or if it was made to sort of, you know. Yeah, now it's a waterfall. Next, Scott. Great, uh, so in terms of solutions, just to give you an idea. Uh, as I said, we'll be looking at the conditions that lead to the problem areas and so if there's, this is just, this is not the Perkiomun, it's just an example. But if there's a bridge over a creek. We'll look and see what's causing the, the problems at that bridge and then identify solutions which could include. Uh, removing sediment from that, uh, brown shaded area, uh, in the flood plain to. Increase the capacity and, and reduce flooding at that bridge. And the planning level solutions will consider various strategies, specific projects to implement those strategies. And initial costs, because we, we want to get things as ready as we can. So they can move from the planning stage to implementation, uh, most likely with the acquisition of the grant. Next, Scott. So for example, we'll have a, this is, uh, in the penny pack. And it's not for this study, but it's, it's a good example. We'll, we'll, we'll locate them on a map, we'll have a, uh, spreadsheet that shows all the different conditions, why there's a problem. So on all the documentation we need to identify solutions. And as I said, to support grant applications and our level of planning will involve maybe some templates. For projects, we're not going to get to the actual. Uh, design and engineering of those projects that will have to be funded later, but we'll have a lot of information that will. I think will, will clearly indicate what needs to be done in certain situations and convey that information to the funders. So we can get money to implement. Next, Scott, thank you, next. So we have a timeline, we're a little behind. Uh, but a- as I said, we're reviewing the existing data that we're getting and we're moving into problem area identification. Looking for. Input on that, uh, HRG has said they will visit each of the sixty sites that are. Uh, selected, uh, and perform some tech- technical analysis. Uh, to determine the, the flows and the conditions that lead to flooding. Before we develop a mitigation strategy and put that all together. And hopefully will be done, uh, in, uh, late twenty twenty-five. That's great, no, go ahead, Scott. So we have an advisory committee and we've told them that we want in, input from them on certain aspects of the process. And I would appreciate input from our board here, uh, again, either this morning or later on, as you think about it. On these aspects as well, identifying the problem areas. We have a lot of problem areas to choose from already, with only about half of the, uh, survey responses coming in. We are going to develop that strategy to prioritize. Uh, and solutions, we, we, we're going to think outside the box and definitely some collaborative efforts will be involved. And then how do we raise the funds to implement will be another. Very important discussion. Next, Scott. So as I said, our, we're moving into fieldwork and evaluation once we decide. On the sixty sites and then we'll be meeting with the stakeholders. They're very interested, they're very engaged. They want to, you know, they, they want this to become something that helps them solve these problems. Uh, and we're holding discussions with municipalities regarding specific. Problem areas. The responses we've gotten so far have been very detailed, HRG, uh, in some cases, the planning commission followed up. Looking for a little bit more detail over our information, because we want to understand what they're looking for, so we can come up with good solutions that can. And I think that's it, yep, so questions or? Inputs. Well, our, our next, well, both. If you've got, if you've got a problem area that, that you think is, is very, you know, critical. I, I want to hear that, but mostly at this stage, we have a bunch of problem areas already, we're going to get a bunch more. We need to make sure that we're selecting them, we're sifting through them with the right criteria to select the top sixty. Uh, and as I said, and it could be frequency of flooding or it could be, you know, is it damaging infrastructure? You know, there's a number of different criteria that we want to look at.
Comments?
You needed it allows you to look at like area of impact in terms of, you know, what. As a criteria to, to prioritize. An area that's prone to flooding that is over a larger area than another location.
Yes, yes, we, we, yeah, the, 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 uh, HRG can put together the, the, uh, area of influence for the problem area. Uh, we can count up all the houses or count up all the infrastructure or, or whatever and compare that. Yeah, we'll be able to.
I, I, I have a question and a comment. In. See this in Latin America. There were sections of. Uh. That became dry or became places where the water wasn't running anymore. Then they started to build, to develop. Sixty years later. Water came back and then water follows the, the natural course. And then flooding is starting to become a problem. Is there anything that we have? How the water naturally, and if there has been development. Or preventing development in places. Where water can take the course again. Preventing. Uh, clothing sense situations that are not.
Well, our, our first step there is electing the king, because I, I need to have the authority to go in and say. You can't develop there. Unfortunately, in Pennsylvania, as you know.
Yeah.
If you own land, you're guaranteed some return. Now, is that return one house very close to the edge of the floodplain up on stilts or is it a? Four-story condominium building? And that's, that's the problem. There's. Couple years ago, when we went through the process with FEMA to update all the municipal, um, floodway maps. We put in there that you can't develop in the floodplain, that you can't fill in the floodplain except by. Uh, conditional use and then we put FEMA's conditions in as the conditional use. So we're trying to make it more difficult, but. In Pennsylvania anyway, with land use law the way it is. You can develop, if you choose to develop in the floodplain. You can develop in the flood, FEMA requires you to floodproof, either elevate. Or make the building so the water can flow through when the flood comes up. You have to floodproof your buildings, but there's no way of saying absolutely no, you cannot build this. On this site.
Be- because if not, a private investment becomes a public problem.
That's exactly right.
And then.
We're, we're involved right now, it's. Somewhat unrelated, but we're involved right now with a study that's looking at, uh, emergency response personnel. And, and the companies that are out there, ambulance companies and so on. And every time we meet, I hear from them, from the people saying. This development has been proposed here or this development is almost completed here and you know we're going to be out there at two AM when the flood comes up. So it impacts. Not only the municipalities, not only the people that live there, but the emergency response people that have to go out. And evacuate a building at two AM or evacuate. You know, I'd hope it wouldn't be a hospital or, or a nursing home or some, but evacuate that facility. When the floodwater strikes.
Or just a long-term rehabilitation class or, right, they have acquisition.
You know, we still, we, we're still dealing, is my understanding with the, the impact of IDA, is that the one? I mean, we lost so many units that were in.
Yes.
The floodplain and they were near horrible units and people are displaced and then we have no place. So. As we look in these communities. And make our decisions, they are multi-level decisions because, um, some of those units really shouldn't be there. And what's going to happen also is insurance companies will not insure them. So you have a lot of challenges and we can't put our, we can't expect the affordable units to be in, um. A location that's, you know, problematic.
Right, and, and in many cases, when, when you say affordable. You know, a lot of times, the floodplain area, for example, is, is like. Some of the only choices that a certain income level has, and if they're spending that money on housing, they don't have that money. Available to recover, you know, spend on recovering from floods, so then they're, they're doubly.
And the impact of water in your property, whether you're rental or you own is really. Very scary, you know, that, so, one, one more time where these are multi. You know, kind of multifaceted issues when we take a look at.
Yeah, right, yes.
Um, so I, uh. My profession used to be a modelist, um, I, I have a belief that in headwaters. So this is a problem that may be what they look at, in headwater streams. Developers typically were required to do a stormwater basin. With a rise point to keep the water there and release it slowly or let it infiltrate the ground. Um, after they leave, the homeowners association was required to link that. It is my belief that no homeowners association ever maintains that. And if you took a look at those stormwater basins and improved them in some way. You would reduce flooding downstream by significantly. So if that could be part of your study, I would be really excited to see what the results are.
And, and Jonathan, it's interesting, I, I mentioned at the beginning, we have, we have several studies, the, the, the Wizahick and Water Quality Improvement Plan. The, uh, Perkiomun mapping and flood study and then this one. In, in the Wizahick and one of our first implementation actions that we anticipate. Probably next year. Is, uh, we have a spreadsheet of all of the basins. In the watershed and we want to, uh, visit them, look at how they're being maintained, what improvements can be made, can they be converted from. Just a basin that passes everything through except for the hundred years floor. Into something that retains water or infiltrates water or so on, so we, one of the benefits of multiple studies going on is we can. Take from them and what works and, and put them into the other, so you're right. You're thinking right along the lines of me.
But in eight lanes, sorry, like go around and see if any of them are filled with water or have anyone in them. And nine times out of ten, there's no water.
Without the, without the maintenance, without somebody inspecting them, you don't have an idea even how they're functioning.
Along the same lines, and I don't know if it's an issue, but one thing I was thinking of, you know. With all the new stormwater management ordinances there, implementing the township's redevelopment is going on, especially more densely populated areas. You have, you know, the, they, just all the embal- the, the redevelopment, you know, proposal. Uh, you know, that parking lot has no stormwater management. Now they're going to, they do the redevelopment, they're gonna. Add storm bait, you know, underground infiltration pits, whatever. But like in a, in a densely populated area like Barrow or even some of the municipalities in eastern part of the county. As these developments occur, is there an issue, and I'm not sure if this is a problem or not, but for a period of time, is there an issue of all these. Basin, underground basins happening, that there's saturation of the soil and less of the percolating perpulation or infiltration of the water being detained.
Yeah, that, that is, that is a, a, a future study, but I will say this. Many of them are not inf- underground infiltration, they're, they're merely underground detention and then they discharge through a pipe slowly into the stream. Because the soils don't really have the infiltration races you need. The issue that I see coming up is one of out of sight, out of mind. When you put the basin underground. I mean, they ignored it before, now they're not even thinking about it, because it's underground and nobody even sees it, you know, so you have to have maintenance. Periodic maintenance and inspection plans and money to do that and. I, I think it's deferred maintenance again all over.
Do you?
I mean, we're, we're going to move on some.
I'll be real quick, has there been a conversation on, it should be, you know, in the west where in regional planning. We have all big regional planning within Brownhurst and the east has always been resistant. I always thought it should be around strong water.
Yes, well, that's why I'm excited about the.
They manage these things regionally as.
I agree with. Thank you. If you do have comments or questions, please just email them to me, suggestion, please, appreciate it.
Okay, next up is the Montgomery County Planning Commission's diversity policy. How you doing, Ann?
Oh, I'm hearing it. Okay. Alright, um, oh. Look at yours irrelevant, you're still moving on, okay. Uh, so, you know, we are running out of time, but I am going to talk a little bit about the diversity policy plan. That the planning commission staff has been working on. Um, a little bit, I'm glad that I have a copy of the presentation in front of me, um, since. He's random black box, keep on, so I'm going to a little bit of background information first. What is DEI stands for diversity, equity and inclusion. Uh, I am going to just. Put a couple of these definitions up on the screen, just so that we have a little bit of an idea of what we're talking about. We're talking about the range of differences. Similarities in, in people and organizations, both here in the planning commission and. The, the outside municipalities and organizations we deal with. Uh, equity deals with their distribution of resources, access and opportunities and inclusion. Uh, I thought was really nicely defined by the images I put on the right side of the screen. The ongoing effort to ensure that people with different identities are valued and involved in decision-making. Um, so why am I bringing this all up today? Uh, next slide.
To you, Ann.
No, not. Um, so this is something that the county has been focused on for the last couple of years, not just the planning commission, but the county overall. Uh, Montgomery and Bucks County leadership held two rounds. Of a racial equity learning community, starting in twenty twenty-one. Uh, Scott and I were both part of that initial cohort of people who took, uh, a year-long training session. Uh, to, to give us tools that we needed to, to learn and build relationships and. Work to advance racial equity and justice within the region, not just the county, but really across the board. There was a second. Uh, cohort held, I guess. Twenty-two to twenty-three or maybe starting in twenty twenty-three, the more people from this office participated in, Chloe and Patty. Um, maybe Ellen, I've lost track of who exactly was in these two training sessions. Um, and the county itself has a draft racial equity action plan that deals with equity on a pretty high. Operational level, but one of the, the marching orders that we were given during these. These racial equity learning community sessions is that the department and all departments were to basically go back. And work on creating, um, equity plans of their own. Um, and this is not just my work, I will, I'm up here talking about it, but we have had an ongoing committee of, of staff members who have really. Tried to tackle some, some difficult topics and conversations and this policy is an outgrowth of that, so the committee. I wrote down a lot of names, we have people who have come and gone and people who have, you know, really contributed to this work, they include. Uh, Chloe, Popek, Patty, Naomi, uh, she's doing well on maternity leave. Robert, Austin, Margo, Amber, Ellen again, uh, Mike Narcoich, I'm Stasia, Tim, Staub. Maybe forgetting people, but, um. maybe forgetting people, but, um, there's a lot of people, um, and a lot, we've had a lot of good talks during the last couple of years as we tried to work on this, and we've also surveyed ourselves, so there, there is a need for this, there is, um, Chloe recently sent around a survey to discuss DEI as, I guess, on a, on a departmental level, and people's feelings about how we were doing, and so a lot of people who answered, and not everyone answered the survey, but the people who did answer the survey, um, many thought that we were moving in the right direction, but not everyone felt that strongly. Uh, there were definitely comments from staff members that, um, that said that we just talk about DEI, and that we're not doing enough to, to move the needle forward, that the, that there is a lack of community, or a sense of community here in the office, and it got worse post-COVID. Uh, and, but also people who don't feel like their contributions are valued, that they don't feel heard, that they don't feel comfortable being their, their, you know, unique selves here, so that's, that's something that we do truly take seriously, and we hope to hold the office accountable to the policy going forward. That being said, um, next slide. So the, the policy has four goals, one of which is still to be determined. So the first goal is to improve outreach to and dialogue with underserved communities and individuals, that is, these are goals for working with the public, we give a lot of that, we want to make sure that we're doing a good job of it. Second goal is to ensure that, uh, that the county planning commission staff, our boards and committees that we work with reflect the demographics of the county. Third is to ensure that our own internal practices and policies advance equity. Uh, so these are goals for, for staff education and training, as well as internal office policies. And the last one is to work toward an equity assessment lens. I'll get more into these on the next couple of slides, although briefly, because I can see that I'm running out of time. Alright, uh, next slide. So the first goal is to improve outreach to and dialogue with underserved communities. Um, we do a lot of outreach work, uh, for the comprehensive plan in particular, uh, I feel like every other weekend, I'm headed out to some community event to talk to people where they're at, uh, so that's important, we want to make sure that we are um, going to, to see people where they are, to make sure that, uh, county residents have access to the education and, and information that we are distributing, uh, to give people access to opportunities to provide input on planning topics, uh, using a variety of platforms, uh, and to ensure that the public-facing materials that we produce, our reports, our documents, reflect the diversity of the county, both geographically, but also the, you know, the population diversity of the county. Next slide. Goal two is to ensure that our staff and boards and committees reflect the demographics of the county. Um, we want to make sure that we're creating opportunities for people to, to not just learn about what urban planning is, but also to make sure that, uh, people have a chance to, to move into this profession, uh, whether it's here or elsewhere, by giving them training opportunities. Uh, we want to make sure that we are recruiting and retaining a diverse workforce. Um, and I missed the word diverse in that fir- in that third bullet point, but also make sure that our, our boards and commissions have a diversity of people on them as well. The third goal is to ensure that our internal practices and policies advance equity. Um, this includes continuing our DEI committee, um, collaborating with other agencies and municipalities to, to work toward equitable outcomes, uh, making sure that we have a welcoming office environment, we are um, a diverse group of people, and I think that we get more diverse as, as time passes. Uh, make sure that people feel that they can be themselves here, and that we respect our differences, as well as similarities. Um, next slide. Is the to-be-determined equity assessment lens, so what I mean by an equity assessment lens is to have some um, set of standards, uh, or policies that we can use to, um, ensure that our work is accurate and reflects diversity and equity properly, so I'm, the next couple of slides are some examples of how other communities are doing this. We have not settled on the best way of moving this lens forward, so for the time being, it is, is our, I guess, our next implementation step, but I just thought I would share this idea with you, and maybe you have thoughts and comments about how we could proceed with having uh, this be a part of our, our work program going forward. Um, the city of Baltimore has an equity lens that it adapted, um, to, from, from elsewhere to, to use against their, their policies or projects, their, um, documents, the plans, with four different areas of equity, structural equity, uh, what historic advantages, advantages or disadvantages have affected residents in the area that they're planning for, procedural equity, uh, are people being included who might have historically been excluded from the planning process at hand? Distributional equity, does the distribution of civic resources and investment count for racially disparate outcomes? As well as transgenerational equity. Does the policy or project result in unfair burdens on future generations? Uh, next one. Seattle has a, not so much a lens, but they have a racial equity analysis that they've done with similar steps to consider as they are doing projects. Um, making sure that, that they are, making sure that, uh, that there is no unfair burden that are being uh, placed on people, minimizing harm, and being accountable for the work they're doing. Um, I included links in this presentation in case anyone is interested in looking at this in more detail, um, and certainly back to this topic. Um, next slide. Other Montgomery County, Maryland's Montgomery, there are a lot of Montgomery counties, but, um, Maryland has a lot of really interesting resources on equity and planning. Um, and they used an equity lens in their own comprehensive plan work, uh, a couple of years ago. They started though with these equity focus areas, which I have a picture of on the next slide, don't go there yet, Scott. Um, where they looked at a couple of different factors, income, race, and ethnicity, ability to speak English, to, to basically identify areas of county that may have inequities. Um, CBRPC has a similar tool that they call the indicators of potential disadvantage, so it's not, it's not for sure that these areas are truly disadvantaged, but it is, it is a first step toward identifying areas that might need an additional focus. Um, they have a more, I, I guess a sharper community equity index that uses more data inputs to look at areas that are at a disadvantage, and they also had what I thought was interesting, an equitable engagement guide to, to set goals for equity in terms of their outreach and engagement efforts. Uh, now you can go to the next slide, ta-da. Equity focus areas, uh, so they are really spread across the county, or at least they're in Montgomery County. Um, and I just thought it was an interesting way of trying to, to assess their work in a, in a different light. So our next step is implementation, so, um, I have, I have taken all of the action items that were included in the policy that was circulated to all of you, um, and Matt Popeck was kind enough to prioritize these various actions, and to think about how we might be able to start implementing them going forward. Some of them are just policy decisions that we need to make, some of them cost money, so they may need to be included in a budget, whether it's next year or in the future. Um, and some of them are just, you know, some of them are things we're already doing, one of the things we talked about was, you know, having recordings of our planning commission meetings, we, we meet during the workday, not everyone can, you can stop and come to this meeting, although, uh, Mike Stokes did, and then he left, uh. Uh, so, you know, we want to make sure that the, the work that we're doing is available and accessible to people, and we are doing, I think, the things that we can to, to make sure that people have this information available. Um, so this is for sure, um, our, the equity lens that I mentioned is, I think, our next big task, but I'm certainly open to ideas and suggestions as to how we could, um, move forward with these ideas, and make sure we are incorporating these ideas of equity into our planning work.
Comments, questions?
I commend you for, um, stepping into this, I mean, clearly, it's, you know, from upstairs, but it's also generated internally. These are not easy challenges, but unless you start asking some questions and are willing to make some changes, we're doing a disservice as maybe an entity to ourselves and to the community, so thank you for doing it.
Others?
It's a journey, it's a journey, and it's a learning, and it's on the way.
Absolutely.
Yeah. No, thank you.
We don't know what we don't know, speaking to someone who, at this stage in my life, is so surprised that I'm feeling that I don't know so much more than I did when I started this journey, you know, seventy years ago. But it's true, because our awarenesses change, our sensitivities change, the reality outside our personal lives has changed. So we have to step up, and sometimes it's hard, but if you're willing to try, you have a chance of making, um, advancements.
Do you find that the engagement among staff and the planning commission, is the different engagement and interest in, in, in the DEI is generational?
Uh, no, I don't, I think that, I think that we have people who you may think of as older, who are interested because their, their kids are pushing the issue, and perhaps are, are bringing up topics that, that we hadn't considered, so for example, um, Bill Hartman has occasionally come to our internal committee meetings and, um, you know, mentioned that, you know, we, we, until recently, we had, you know, the word chief in some of our chief.
Chief.
Some of our job titles. Um, and we took that away, because he brought up the fact that his, his daughter, his daughter was uncomfortable with that word as being a, a job type word. It shouldn't be someone's job title to be the chief of something, that it was a word that had, uh, connotations that she didn't like. And we thought about it, and we're like, you know, she's, she's right, and he's right, Bill was right, so, you know, we, we changed our job titles. Um, that's not to say that the rest of the county has followed suit, but I think that, that it's not necessarily the, well, perhaps it is the younger generation informing the older generations, but we really are getting participation from, from all parts of the office.
Well, participation one, but just talking about the driving, one of the driving factors, I think he said Bill's, Bill's involvement. Um, there's, is it more of a relevant topic generationally, or do you find that it's, like, spread among the different age groups in planning?
Um, so I can speak to that a little bit, I, I was recently in more of a leadership project.
I didn't hear.
Spicy. I'm glad you found those, so anyway, um, I was in a, originally part of a, a leadership, of inclusive leadership training, and I would say that the proportion of people of that met, went from the gamut, from a few people that were twenty to those of us. I think I might be the only sw- oldest one here at the planning commission, um, I might have been, not sure I was the oldest one in that group, but I would say that that was, it was multi-generational, and that it was, there was not, it wasn't led by a big one.
I would say the same about our, like, our job committee, which is just like an ad hoc, whoever is interested can come and talk about DEI, she's like that level, has been different ages of people, or women, women, they think. It's not just the understaffed members.
Yeah, I'll just want, wanted to throw a comment into our, just by hearing the names mentioned on that committee, just is a sign in itself of the interest um, of staff in this issue, and I, and I, as director, I really appreciate that, that, and that so many people are invested in it, and, and are working toward change. Um, it, like everything, it has, it takes a while, um, but, you know, we're on the forefront of the county as a whole, as far as departments go, and being ahead of this issue, but I think everyone internally thinks we're, we're behind, and like, not doing it fast enough, but, um, I'm hoping the ABN, you know, is, is everyone's proud of, as we get there. And thank everyone for that, his work.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, it's a tough, it's, it's a complicated, complex issue to tackle. Um, there's so many different, from my perspective, there's so many different definitions as to what is diverse, what is equitable, what is inclusionary, I know there's just, there's general understanding of this, what there's, you know, but, you know, I talked to, you know, I talked to my kids about, they're working, uh, one in the county and one in a private company, and, you know, I talk about work-life, uh, balance, and, and, you know, how they're, you know, my, my son, and how his, his, uh, boss, or, you know, whoever's head of company, doesn't necessarily take, get their inputs, make decisions, and, you know, I grew up a certain way, and that's why I was asking the generational question, is because, you know, I, I grew up in a, in a format of working that, you know, we took for granted that the person who was instructing you was, that's the way they wanted it done, and there wasn't necessarily a large conversation about it, you know, maybe on some of the smaller items, and, you know, um, but the overall, overall things were being decided by people in different positions than I, but I think I find with my kids that they're looking for more of that collaboration, more of that inclusionary, more of, um, how their time is equitably uh, um, thought of, uh, both, you know, working and having their outside life, and I think there's, it's, it's a complicated, to me, it's a complicated conversation out of my kids, I can only imagine having it within a different organization such as the planning commission. Um, and, you know, it'd be interesting to see how it, how it, how it gets molded, when, as you go through this process. And how it affects, you know, the, how it affects the cohesiveness of the planning commission, hopefully it brings, you know, hopefully makes it more cohesive. Um, but there's also, there's, there'd also be, you know, um, uh, division points too, within that, within that process, so, it's interesting to see, because it's, it's not easy, it's not an easy conversation to have.
It is not, and, you know, there is the internal workings, but also the fact that we answer to a lot of different people. We work with communities that may not have leadership, that shares our opinions on things. Um, you've certainly had people come back from an evening meeting and report that things were said that made them feel uncomfortable, uh, you know, figuring out how to to stay true to the things that we say we believe in while working with the public can be a challenge.
Right.
Yeah, I know, I'd add a little bit to this, because while you were speaking, and just something that just came across my mind when you mentioned your son. My son took a, a test, a DNA test, twenty-three and me, where, um, this is what he started his first year in college, Morehouse College, and he was one of the students that was selected. His results came out amazing, it was amazing, because my son is actually fifty-three percent Caucasian, and the other percent, okay, is self-cult. Now, both of his parents are African Americans, we identify as African Americans. So there's a history behind this here, my husband has Asian in his bloodline, and I have Latin in my blood. And so, it was, it was quite interesting to learn how we're all, you know, we have to have a dialogue about that, we have to have people who are willing, that looks like some of the people here to take a DNA test, and talk about that, and make that a discussion. It wouldn't make it be so difficult to really define what diversity and inclusion is, because we are that, sitting here in this very, this very minute. So we're, we're, we can realize it, yeah, so it was quite interesting, because the young men on his campus, as you know, that college is predominantly black, because it's an HBCU, um, they, they made fun of it. They said to Jenkins, what are you? They, uh, you know, so he found his ways, so you're constantly going through this struggle, and as a student that attended Montgomery County School, um, you know, that was one of the reasons why he wanted to attend an HBCU, because he wanted to get out of that stigma. And so, we need to talk about the real issues before we can address them, that's my point.
This is not a committee, this is a, this will lead to a change in how we function.
Yeah.
It's, it's not something, I mean, not, and, well, well, the questions have to be asked in an ongoing manner. They, they just do, I mean, I mean, what Sandra said, I mean, it's really true, you know, we tend to self-sag, we tend to do, I mean, we all have stories how this, you know, there was the aha mo- moment. Um but it has to be a component of. The work that we do in all the entities in our lives, whether there are personal interactions or there's something, planning commission or the county. E- even when we're doing like the comprehensive planning, we really read the demographics and we read some of the stuff. And sometimes you have to dig a little deeper and say. But this is not really what I thought the county was, I mean, how many? Kids in the county understand this, how many adults, it's just. It's interesting, that was a very interesting story this year, thank you.
Thank you.
That that is something that perhaps it can be helpful with. I have been member of two uh. Race and equity committees was. Has been with Madeline Dean, the other has been in the School of Social Policy and Practice of the University of Pennsylvania. And specifically in the in the case of the School of Social Policy and Practice. What we wanted to convert, it was a task force. Was that we understood. Uh what were the issues and the situations and the listening. We created this action committee, you know, and we had some goals, very specific goals. In order to take action. Uh I have to say it after sitting there for six years. It has been great to see improvements, the changes, the increase in scholarship. The etcetera, I mean, the changes that we were looking for, of course, it's another nature, you know, and the school is. However, it's the same element of add diversity, equity. And uh. And I wonder, and I remember that for some time we had a consultant. That helped us to have these dialogues, an expert that helped us to to drive from the comments and the understandings and the feelings. Into actually a plan and actions. Implementation and the the implementation and uh. And it has been helpful, it has been very helpful, therefore. From my experience in sitting down in in those committees. And then are those, uh and the same with uh with Congresswoman Dean. Those actions, those voices, those things, those policies. It has been helpful. But it's a process, it's a never-ending process. It's a never-ending process, therefore. Just, uh I first I want to say thank you for walking the journey to the whole planning commission. And and to see what can be some tools that can be helpful in your journey.
Any other comments? Any comments from staff? Or public, anybody online? I assume we'll. There'll be more, a share of more information as. Staff works through. Work or progresses through the discussions.
Absolutely.
And I think there's clearly some um interest along the board to be involved too, so. And learn. So. Me, I was talking about.
I thought you were busy looking for a free parking spot. You're not busy looking for a free parking spot?
Well. Yes. That would be equitable if I had a. Thanks, Ann. I'm glad you joined us today, Ann.
I'm glad.
All right, Scott. All right, we're going through the final list item, uh director's report, starting with staff news, we got two new staff members who are having to introduce to the board, uh we'll start with the John Secretos to me here as our new senior GIS uh coordinator. Say hi. Uh Ja- John's filling a a a long vacant position uh putting our GIS staff back to three and uh grateful to have me as a long gift gift background in the private sector. Looking forward to uh working with him and expanding our GIS capabilities, uh. At least by thirty-three percent. And in back there we have Karina Ahmed, she's the new uh uh principal graphic designer for communications, uh this had his umbrella.
I'm expanding my. Yeah, I know, okay.
Which actually includes GIS as well. I don't know if you want to introduce.
Oh, no, 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 I'm I'm, um so Karina, she comes with us with a background now, actually uh in English, but as well as graphic design. Um and she is fluent in three languages, I just want to say that, I find that very, um and um. Is um has stepped in very quickly already with um while working on both sides of balancing our communication and other graphic requests. Um I will let her see if she worries about herself if she wants to do it, well. Um I'm not a great speaker, but I enjoy my work very much, I'm usually looking forward to working with. Yeah, uh German, um English and Bengali.
Speak English.
If you want to take some lessons from.
Thank you, um also some good staff uh news updates, uh Tim Stubbe will be honored or at the um uh GVF TMA's. Annual event called Insights later this month, uh the top TDM professionals in the region under forty. Um so he, there's a long line of MCPC staff they recognize for that, but we want to acknowledge Tim. Uh and also, it's been a while since we last met, uh right after we met, uh we had our last round of promotions, so I did want to let the board know. Uh we had four promotions in July, John Miklos is now a senior community planner. Matt Lovitz Lovitz is a a senior community planner as well. Ellen Miramontes is a principal open space planner. And Matt Popeck has uh uh is now assistant transportation section manager two. Uh so congratulations, uh again, well-earned and deserved, so. Uh moving on to uh it's budget season, it seems to be budget, we covered operations uh a a while back ago. Uh we now have been discussing the capital budget, uh planning commission, as as many of you know, uh and as we saw from from the tip update. Uh it's involved with a lot of capital projects, uh probably more so than the typical planning commission, uh so that is always a an important and um uh. Useful time to coordinate with our administration, with county commissioners as well on those projects, I just wanted to highlight in addition to. Many of the ongoing projects, uh trail projects, uh road projects like Ridge Pike that are included in that budget. Um there's a few uh initiatives that we're pushing for this year, uh for next year. Um and I just want to mention a couple of them, again, these are to be determined if if they are able to fit in, there's certainly not a. A uh certainly budgetary challenges um uh with with what's happened in the economy and. But one thing that we are very uh. I'm very positive toward is trying to create a public-facing open space grant program within the grant uh. Open space uh capital monies that we generally uh have each year to deal with, we feel bringing this to life, giving municipalities and. Land conservation organizations more um light of day and more empowerment to apply for these projects will give better projects. And also be more equitable in how we distribute those, um and it's not, won't just be those who are in the know, but but be more uh open to it. Uh also, we're we hope to resurrect the county transportation grant program which took a year off this year. Uh based on the loss of the source funding for that program with the five dollar fee, that money will not be coming back due to. Uh like the reasons I won't get into, um so we're kind of pushing for uh finding uh a spot for one point five million in the capital budget. Uh that could continue those parties, I think, and successful and was a popular program. Uh other, and then we have a couple of other capital investments, uh we're trying to develop uh on behalf of the county, one is a permanent house hazard, household hazardous waste center drop-off.
That's a new idea.
We actually have done. And anyway, yes, as you know, we have the seven mobile click parts, it'd be nice to have one place where people could go all year round. To address those those materials that are better off being recycled and safely taken care of. The North Town Dam, you've heard much about, um that continues to be a process of environmental section and going through the FERC process and our county commissioners are very supportive of it. Uh to generate hydroelectric power for the county campus and. And Trail Junction Center also down uh in that area uh near Lafayette and two or two or about. Uh investing in both the building that sits there uh currently empty as well as the grounds around it. The the intersection of the cross of this Chester Valley Trail extended and Scooter River Trail. Just got to be designed, asking great visions of how that plays to the. Purpose towards both the community and other. And then finally, the White Marsh Floodplain Restoration, this is a property or about twelve acres that the county owns. White Marsh, uh that was decimated by Hurricane Ida and the cleanup afterward. And so uh we're looking not just to revegetate, which nature is uh actually kind of doing on its own a little bit. But I but improve the whole floodplain grounds, uh to take advantage of the opportunity and making it really a. Pilot project for how you can. Repervert, reconfigure uh important floodplain areas.
Certain area, maybe seventy-three.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Like that turn.
Yeah, and all all those, some of these already have some funding attached to uh LSA, like LSA grants and a few others, state money, so. Fighting the fight to keep them going and and complete those projects. Uh couple conferences coming up in October, the Impact Conference, the transit-oriented conference. Uh for focuses on equitable TOD, one of the things. Uh we have some, a lot of participants uh working alongside partners in the Pottstown area as they address the SRPRA. Uh coming up and uh so. They're they're both sponsoring some attendance from staff as well as a regional day on the Wednesday that conference, it all talk about Pottstown together. And then APA PA Conference is in Erie this year, which is quite a distance, but we actually have seven people that are signing up. Uh to go and a number of those are giving presentations, including Eric and Patty on ethics, Patty is, we're stating on a on a housing focus presentation. Uh with other partners outside of the county, you jump me close, is also involved with the public placemaking session. Outside partners as well. Um and finally, uh just hitting the events, this Saturday, if anyone's interested, there is a ride with Neil McKitchen. Uh from the Metroplex Office Building at Germantown and Chemical Road to Concha Hawkins, uh to Center Concha Hawkins where the septic station is. Uh the purpose of which is to celebrate what Matt was talking about earlier with the tip funding going towards Circuit Trail. And and how the Cross County Trail, which is a segment that will be on for that ride. Uh w- w- is the the recipient and beneficiary of of those funds, so we're gonna promote that, have a short, really great ride, about twenty minutes each way. And uh anyone is welcome to join us, um uh. I think I I sent out the invitation earlier this week. Um it's at nine fifteen, so. Uh and then also, uh there's another ribbon cutting that will be happening along Bethlehem Pike in Lower Gwinnett, recipient of MOCO twenty forty funds for. For pedestrian improvements on that stretch, we actually are still finalizing the date and time on that, so stay tuned, we'll send out an email once that's finalized, but again.
September thirtieth, around lunchtime, but. No. Solid.
We'll we'll confirm that. And then finally, I I just want to uh promote the uh further off the October thirtieth, Planning Smarter Event Active Transportation. Sorry, forgot the details on, but anyway, it's a a session acknowledging uh active transportation projects. Projects outside of just vehicular, the means paths can do both rural and urban. And uh it'll be a two-hour uh event from four to six on October thirtieth. And again, uh welcome to everyone's participation, we have a number of partners joining us for that as well, both TM and this. That's all, yeah.
Any other comments or?
I think we're at the point where we really can do a new org chart and um. Um a staff directory with pictures. You know, a lot of new people, maybe by the end of the year?
Yes, uh we have, we have an org chart, yeah.
And we only have one vacant position, right?
That's true, I meant to say, only one, that's great. And I'm and I'm apologies, I forgot to mention, a heads up for next month's board meeting is Stephen Leso, it's an away meeting in Cheltenham. Uh we're gonna see a lot of cool sites, uh starting at Curtis Hall and um also Springfield Township and uh look forward to seeing everybody.
I have one last question, Bob's not here, he's online, do I get to keep his pen?
He's already taken it's even. I was gonna say, you've had your. There, you know?
Steve, Steve, we gift it to you.
You're too kind, Bob, you're too kind.
Thanks, everyone, have a good afternoon.
Thank you.